for the Carmel-by-the-Sea City Council if the minutes can reflect that all council members are present. And Chip, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Chip, while you're still standing, if you don't mind joining me. Thank you. As everyone probably knows, we went through a very robust search and as we announced and made the decision last month to hire Chip Rarig starting today, March 1st. And so, I guess, yeah, you did show up yesterday. So it is my great honor to administer the oath of office to Chip Rarig. So now I will give you the microphone.
(Inaudible) and repeat after me. I, Chip Rarig.
I, Chip Rarig.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will preserve and enhance the character and economic vitality.
That I will preserve and enhance.
Character?
The character and economic vitality of the community.
Of the city of Carmel-by-the-Sea.
Of the city of Carmel-by-the-Sea.
And that I will support and defend.
And that I will support and defend.
The citizens and staff.
The citizens and staff of the city.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And City Ordinance 96.
And City Ordinance Number 96.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
We are very happy to have you sitting in that seat, Chip, and welcome. Next, I want to recognize another gentleman that we are very fortunate to have in the chambers and fortunate to have been sitting in that seat up until very recently. Mike, if you don't mind meeting me at the front.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ashley.
Mike, you've been a real pleasure to work with, and of course, you're not leaving.[445.12][445.12](Laughter) At least, we know you're not leaving. But we did want to take this opportunity to recognize the incredible work and sacrifice and contribution to the city and to the community that you made in stepping forward in our time of need. And that's what you do each and every day. But in this case, you did it far and far above the call of duty. And you've been a real pleasure and an absolute professional to work with over the last number of months. And we are very fortunate to have you. I'm very fortunate to have worked as closely as I had an opportunity to work with you in the last number of months. We wanted to recognize also that, of course, your sacrifice is also your family's sacrifice. So let me start by, we provided for your wife a bouquet. I know that being police chief is really 24/7, and so you're used to getting, your husband getting calls at any hour of the day and night. But I also recognize that the last number of months, I'm sure that he has been, you know, has had to sacrifice and you've had to sacrifice. And we wanted to extend our appreciation to you and the rest of your family for the sacrifice that you made through your husband on behalf of the city. So, thank you.[568.54][568.54](Applause) We have a couple things here for you. First of all, we have a plaque that is "Mike Calhoun, Public Safety Director and Chief of Police in recognition and appreciation of your service to the City of Carmel-by-the-Sea as Interim City Administrator, 2015 to 2016." And then we have a proclamation. "Mike Calhoun," whereas Michael Calhoun began his career in the City of Carmel-by-the-Sea Police Department in August of 1984, and was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 2002, promoted to Commander in 2008, and his peers recognized him as the Officer of the Year in 1990 and 1997. And whereas he became the city's interim chief in 2010, and in 2012 became the city's permanent police chief and director of public safety. And whereas he stepped in and became the city's interim administrative services director in 2014, dividing his time between City Hall and the Police Department. And whereas his can-do attitude, knowledge of the community, city organization made him the perfect person to take on the role of interim city administrator during the city recruitment for a permanent city administrator, and while still fulfilling his duties as the police chief and director of public safety, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Jason Burnett, Mayor of the City of Carmel-by-the-Sea, on behalf of the city council, citizens hereby thank and honor Mike Calhoun for his commitment and continued service to the city, its residents and staff, for willingness to take on additional roles, and we thank his wife, Tracy, daughters Kendra and Christina for their support and sacrifice to Mike during the last several months. Thank Before I give you the microphone, I, on a personal note, when Mike was promoted to police chief, I offered for you and your wife to spend a long weekend down at my family's house down in Big Sur. And I've arranged a similar long weekend for the two of you or whoever you want to bring. If your daughter, if your daughters are in town, of course, they are welcome. And so I will provide the details of that. But it's been both a professional and a personal pleasure to work with you, Mike.
Thank you, everybody. I do have to mention that I have to thank council for Mayor Burnett and all the council members for their support. It's been really wonderful throughout my whole career, but these last four months, they were very committed to letting staff do what we needed to do, and I really do appreciate that. And I have to thank the community. They've been very supportive, again, throughout my career, but the relationships formed and people checking in on me. We at the Police Department do occasional welfare checks on people, but they were checking in on me, and I do appreciate that. But I have to tell you that if it wasn't for my predecessors, my mentors, my teachers, the prior city administrators, my prior police chiefs, I would not have been able to do this. When Mayor Burnett asked me to do this, it wasn't a question of if I could, it was when do you need me and what do you want me to do? I've always been that way, and I'll always be that way for the city. But I have to reach out to staff, because staff is just unbelievable. If it wasn't for them, how would I be able to do this? So I thank all of you and even the staff members that aren't here. So, and lastly, my wife, she is my anchor and my support, and I love you very much. Thank you.[826.61][826.61](Applause)
I will just note that we are, as an organization, particularly fortunate to now have another person who is, in essence, cross-trained. It really helps to have different parts of the organization understand the whole. And so I think that we are going to be a stronger organization for, Mike always had the big-picture view of the organization, but until you sit in that seat, I doubt you see all the details that he's seen in the last number of months. Next, we just wanted to recognize and have a moment of silence for Dale Heckaus, who passed away in, earlier in February. Dale had, as many people know, he had served the community in a variety of ways. He was an early chairman of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. He often, he was a frequent contributor to the deliberations at Water up until quite recently. And we all hopefully listen carefully to his thoughts. He was a wise, wise person with a lot of experience. He, and this is something that I didn't know, but he was an avid photographer, and he wrote, quote, "That I'd walk 10 miles for a good wildflower image." And I just, I just like that, that thought that, you know, someone in sort of the pursuit of, of that sort of perfection, but for, you know, for artistic. And I like to think of myself as an amateur photographer, but can't say that I've walked 10 miles for the perfect shot. He graduated from high school in 1943 and immediately enlisted in the Marines, put him through a college training program at Cornell. After the war, he earned his bachelor's degree from Michigan State University, master's from University of Wisconsin, and a doctorate from Carnegie Tech, where he was recruited by the CIA. He was sent to Georgetown University to study Russian. And one of his daily duties in serving in the agency's Russia Bureau was to digest each edition of the Russian newspaper, Pravda, and I'm sure that Sue can both correct my pronunciation and maybe have some more details. But he lived in Carmel for 30 years, and I just wanted to recognize the passing of one of the great civic leaders of this community. So if you'll join me for a moment of silence. We'll now turn to announcements. We did have a closed session yesterday, and one of the items was continued until 4:00 today, and the council may convene after this open session to continue that further. But let me turn it to Don for those announcements, and then there's one. I apologize, I did. I'm not giving up the microphone today, am I? I'll turn it to, to.
Mark will be doing it.
Okay, to Mark to make the introduction. Thank you very much, Ashley, and thank you, Mark.
Almost out the hot seat. So thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. First of all, this is the fourth new employee for the planning department that I've introduced since September. So I think that's great. We're making great strides in terms of staffing up. So today I'm introducing Shashana Wangaran. She was hired by the city as a permit technician in mid-February. Shashana joined the city back in May 2015 as an intern. She was assisting with planning and permit technician duties. And at that time, we realized she was a keeper and invited her to come on as a full-time employee. Shashana has her degree from CSUNB in Environmental Science and Policy. She graduated in 2014. And I just want to say, in working with Shashana, she has a really great attitude, great customer service, which is key at that front-counter position. And I want to welcome Shashana to the city.[1157.13][1157.13](Applause)
Welcome, Shashana. Yeah. Now I will turn it for Don, to Don for announcements from closed session.
Hey, these, I don't know if the microphone's on or not. The city council met in closed session pursuant to California Government Code 54956.9. And that was one case, and it's PG&E, which I think people are familiar with. We did file our opening briefs in that particular matter, and the council received an update and providing guidance where we're going from here. The second item was labor negotiations, and it's pursuant to California Government Code 54957.6 regarding the ambulance personnel. And the city did provide guidance as to, received an update and provided guidance regarding further negotiations. The third one, and that's the one that was continued from yesterday till today, and will be continued till after this meeting this evening, is to meet and confer regarding the Sunset Cultural Center and their particular operating lease agreement pursuant to California Government Code 59, excuse me, 54957.6. And there are no announcements, but there's one announcement at this time, and I'll turn it back to the mayor regarding that announcement.
Thank you, Don. Regarding that final item, the city council, just as a little background for those who may not follow every meeting and every agenda, in the fall reviewed in open session a term sheet. And that term sheet was then, we didn't receive a huge amount of feedback on that from the public, or frankly, from ourselves, from the council. We didn't have a lengthy deliberation. But that has then been used by a negotiating team as a broad structure. We received earlier a public comment, and so that's the process that we're going through right now, just so people understand. And the, this is a work in progress, and we'll probably have, we most certainly will have subsequent, a subsequent closed session meeting, if not multiple closed session meetings, before we bring this into land. But we did receive a comment, or maybe multiple comments, encouraging us to pursue an RFP for the management of Sunset Center. And the city council voted not to do that. And so that's the, that's the action item announcement. We are continuing with the negotiations with Sunset Center. At the outset, way back at the beginning of this incarnation of Sunset Center, it's my understanding there was an RFP, and certainly a couple of years ago, there was an RFP. And that whole process didn't result in either a better outcome, and it actually, if anything, I think, created some unnecessary tension. And the council believes that the Sunset Center is doing a very good job. You know, of course, there's always room for improvement, as there is in any organization, but they have a solid board and a solid leadership team in place, and that they're the right organization. So the fact that we're, you know, going to take our time to work through this document is not meant to reflect anything other than just wanting to, you know, be careful about the document and dot our i's and cross our t's and so forth. But the council has confidence that we will reach mutually agreeable continuation with SCC, and that's the path that we're on. Anything that I missed in that?
Could I supplement that if you don't mind?
Yeah, please.
One other thing that was discussed in terms of the RFP process is that this is the Sunset Center Cultural and Community Center. And we looked at the word "community", and quite honestly, we did this way back when we first started this process. And the reason, one of the reasons we're not going out for an RFP again is the fact that the board itself is the community. It's made up of people of the community, and thus the community is really the one managing it for the city right now. So that's kind of the partnership we have. And if we went out for an RFP process again, it would create some of the tension that doesn't need to be there, and we wouldn't have the community actually running the community center, so to speak. So that was another reason that we elected, or the city council elected, and it was a unanimous vote, not to go out for an RFP again at this point in time.
With that, I will ask, start at my left, Victoria, any announcements?
Well, I, Mayor, sat in for you at the Tamsi meeting, so, but you probably know more about it. I can relate.
Why don't you start?
I'll start, and then you, okay.
If I can.
So I sat in on the Tamsi meeting, which had a significant vote this last, last past week on what to do with the three-eighths percent, three-eighths of a cent sales tax increase. There was near unanimity in the room that all the jurisdictions in the county wanted to go forward with it. They felt, I think, the overarching theme is we need to become a self-help county, because without that, we cannot get grant funds, we cannot leverage the money we do get, and there are significant, in the order of hundreds of millions of dollars in cuts coming toward, about to affect Tamsi from the state. So that was the overarching theme. That's sort of the highest order of importance that came out of that board meeting. However, last time we met as a council, Ken and the mayor raised, I think, very important reservations about some of the ways that that money could be spent. And so since that vote, I think the mayor's been working very hard with Tamsi to sort of see if we can improve the measure before it actually goes to the public. So maybe that's where you pick it up, Jason.
I think a couple of things that are, have evolved since this council last heard that item. And we certainly, I think, it would be appropriate to ask Tamsi to come back, maybe as early as next month, and have a more robust discussion on this. But the formula, as we first heard it, was a 50-50 split between regional and local. The, what was actually adopted was a 40-60 split between regional and local, which is to say, local receives 10% more taken away from regional. In terms of what that does, what one of the calculations that I think Ken and I both did was that when you look at a dollar raised in Carmel-by-the-Sea and where that dollar goes, under the previous formula, 18 cents of every dollar stays here, and 82 cents goes outside. Under this new formula, it's marginally better. It's now 22 cents stays here. So I won't, you know, we're not, in that sense, you know, it's not a big shift, but it is something. There was also concern about, because a lot of this, what ends up happening, the way the formula works for the local split, it is, goes to jurisdictions, the 12 cities plus the county, based on a formula of 50% lane miles weight and 50% population weight. Turns out, not surprising, that the county has a lot of lane miles, and so they get a lot of money under that formula. And they actually get net, you know, almost $70 million goes from the cities to the county. And so a couple of concerns raised. One is, well, where is that money going to? And the county is making, taking strides to identify where, at least in the near term, where that money goes. Looking out 30 years, it's more challenging. They've also committed to funding some regional projects that, in essence, sort of backfill some of the shortfall that the regional projects now have because of the move from 50-50 to 60-40. And there is also concern about this money being used to, you know, contribute to sprawl and whatever the opposite of smart growth is, you know, not city-centered growth, because it is, you know, roads outside of cities by definition. And so we now have in place a policy document that's still being crafted, but that commits that this money only goes for maintenance of repairs of existing roads. It can go to new projects such as bike lanes and trails and such, but in terms of roads, it would only go to road maintenance. And then there's also a maintenance of effort provision, so that, at least in theory, and I'm still working with staff on the exact way that this is worded, but at least in theory, there wouldn't be an ability to then back out other money. Money is fungible, after all. And so back out other money and then use that and unintentionally have this be a way of funding projects that city residents may or may not support. And I've heard from several constituents on this. So I think that those are all positive steps. And at this point, the overall formula is locked in, but I think that the, the policy document that will be part of the voter pamphlet and ultimately will bind. and ultimately will bind all the cities and the county in terms of the use of this money, that is still a work in progress. And I'm happy to report that Tamsi staff, so far, have been quite receptive to the concerns that we've raised and so that...
And I might just chime in with one other detail, which is similar. So no new roads, only repairs of existing roads, or maintenance, as the mayor put it. And also, no widening of roads, which is, by the way, another way to get more roads, in a way, if you add a lane or whatever. So I think that is also just sort of a comfort, that these are, the idea is that this is really not meant, and the mayor's diligently working out the details, to contribute to dumb growth.
The regional projects, which are specifically called out, and therefore, there's perfect transparency, or very good transparency, you know, some of those, in fact, are, but that's, in my mind, fair enough. The voters can then decide whether or not they like the mix of regional projects, and that's a discussion for another day, and ultimately, for all of you to decide. So, anything else in the way of announcements? Ken?
I wouldn't make an announcement. We all, I think, read in the paper that the Panetta Lecture Series is coming to the Sunset Center. It has been at the conference center over in Monterey for, since its very beginning. Sunset seats more people than the conference center does, and so there are available seats. There has been a long wait list for seats for the Panetta Institute since the beginning. And so they have seats, they have, you can buy a package of four seats, or you can buy, I think, individual tickets, or you can buy standby tickets. And standby tickets are half the price of the individual tickets. So I'm going to read off a phone number, which is five-eight-two-four-two-hundred, which is the Panetta office over at CSU MB. The first of those four lectures is on March fourteenth, which is two weeks from last night. And so this is a golden opportunity, if you want to get on that list, or to hear those lectures. We're really thrilled, I see Christine sitting here, really thrilled to have the Panetta Lecture Series here in Carmel by the Sea, and there's an opportunity for us locals to get in and actually hear what is being said. It is also, as you remember, broadcast statewide, so if you don't want to buy tickets, you can still have an opportunity to see it on the television.
Steve? Gary? Chip?
Just real briefly, just want to again thank the council and the community for their, for their confidence in me. This is actually my second day I came in, and the staff was, said, "What the heck are you doing here?" Yesterday, but had some great meetings. I'm just so grateful to Chief Calhoun for his leadership and mentorship, quite frankly. We've already, in the past three months, we've spent a lot of time together, perhaps more than we did in my previous rendition here thirteen years ago or so. And spending a lot of time with the community, and I'm grateful for that time, spending a lot of time with the staff, and I just want to reiterate that I am here for the staff to be their, their backstop, and work with them, and learn from them, and support them. And I'm beginning that process this week as well, by meeting with some of the staff members. I, the last point, I hope you would notice that we did modify my oath of office, so I could really come in with full support for those things that I believe in, the protection of the character of this community, the protection of the economic vitality of this community, protection of ordinance number ninety-six, protecting the citizens, protecting the staff. And those are all items that I fully intend to fulfill during my tenure with you. So thank you so much again, council.
Can I have one more hit?
Sure.
There was an event in town this weekend called Gourmet Fest. It was a food and wine festival, took place pretty quietly. It generated a lot of tax base for the community, both in terms of hotel rooms. I think there were over a thousand hotel rooms that were used. A lot of inns in town were full. Didn't take place in the summer, took place in the off-season. Restaurants were full, inns were full. I bought tickets to a couple of events, and there were a lot of foreign languages being spoken. People come from great distance. And to me, it's a great model, as we think about events in town, to have things that are sort of low-key, below-the-radar screen.
Off-season.
Off-season. It really is, I think, something we should go back and take a look at because of, I think, of the effectiveness of the timing and the used facilities in town, some of the local hotels, some of the conference facilities. So it's a really good model.
Yeah. Don, any other announcements?
No, thanks.
Okay. I have a couple. First of all, I am going to be offering, you know, as part of my transition, I want to make sure that whatever's in my head on the water projects is in other people's heads as well. So I'm going to be hosting a meeting and inviting all the candidates, and frankly, anyone else who wants to come, sort of going through where I see various elements of that. And so we don't have a date set yet, but I'll be doing that, and I'd encourage anyone who's interested to come, and particular candidates, if they can. And if you can't, feel free to reach out to me. I, you know, my overriding interest is to make sure that whoever is in these seats in the future is at least informed by the work that we've done to date, because there's substantial more work to be done. And as I've said in the past, you know, we may be on, in the red zone, but a lot of balls get fumbled in the red zone, and we need to make sure that this is seen all the way through. Second is, we had our workshop last night on the fees, and a variety of fees throughout the city. It was, in my mind, it was a great workshop. It wasn't as well-attended as tonight's council meeting is, but I imagine that as people sort of understand this, that they'll figure out sort of what issues they want to weigh in on. In light of that, we decided that we're going to have two staff-led workshops, and we're going to try to schedule those in the next month, where they will be focused on sort of different aspects of the organization, and therefore, and different aspects of the community that may be interested in participating, where it'll be a real roll-up-the-sleeves opportunity to go through and sort of go through all of these calculations that our fee consultant has gone through. So Ashley and Chip and I talked about this earlier, and they'll be working to schedule that. The plan, given council member schedules and so forth, is for those to not, you know, council members are, of course, welcome to attend, but they won't be a council meeting, per se, but an opportunity for sort of more of a working session for anyone who wants to, you know, really sit down and go through this. And then, at least the current plan, subject to change, is that we'll have another workshop, council workshop, at the April city council meeting, either the Monday or Tuesday. So that's the plan there, and I would encourage people who are interested in such to watch out for one or the other, figure out which one you are interested in, and attend if you can.
Can I just supplement what you said for one second, Mayor? I think it's important for folks to know, when I hear the word "fee," I think, oh, no, what are we talking about? And I think it was fascinating to me to just have the overarching understanding that the analysis that was done by this consultant was to, and I'll give you an example, look at the cost of issuing a library card. If we ask for someone to give ten dollars to receive a library card, the question is, did it cost ten dollars for us to provide that service? Or did it cost five dollars, or did it cost a hundred dollars for the city to provide the service of issuing the library card? And the question the gentleman asked is, you know, how aligned are the fees we're charging with the effort behind the fees of the service we're providing? And so the question could be, the fees are too high, the fees are too low, or the fees are what we want them to be, and we want to decide as a community whether to supplement the fee, because we think, for example, a library card should be cheap. Even if it costs us a hundred dollars to make one, we want to give them away for ten dollars. So I just want folks to understand that when we do these meetings, it's going to be about calibrating what fees should be. It's not about just raising them or lowering them, it's about trying to understand what it costs to provide the services, and what things we want to, as a, sort of as a governing philosophy, subsidize. So I thought that was fascinating. I thought he did a wonderful job of explaining it. I'm sure I did a less wonderful job, but I think if we, you know, it might be a way to lower the temperature on what could be a hot topic, if we just understand that it's really an analytical exercise, rather than just an up or down.
Thank you for that. I added the two-minute version of the hour and a half last night, which was, I thought, a really educational, educational for all of us. We all received it at the same time. The second is on beach fires and the propane devices. If you want, Rob Millane has set up in the hallway a handful of propane devices that you can go check out. Obviously, you know, checking them out on a carpet in a building is not the real thing. But there will be several opportunities over this month where staff will be inviting anyone who wants to, to come down to the beach and, you know, see these in operation firsthand. We were trying to schedule a council workshop, where the council as a whole would come down. We couldn't align schedules, and so we're going to do a small handful of these, where, again, they'll be staff-led. Just for anyone to come down, we'll work to publicize them. Hopefully, each of us, council members, can make it to at least one, if we choose to, in order to see these in practice and learn whether we like them or not. And that'll inform the future discussion on that. Same thing with respect to the wood-burning fireplace for new fireplaces. The planning commission is taking this up on the ninth of March, and then staff will hold a workshop, in particular, reaching out to, you know, public at large, but those who we think may have a particular, particularly strong point of view, one way or another, on this, you know, builders, architects, realtors, for example, and make sure that we're hearing from them and we're working to incorporate their point of view. So that's planned. Again, that'll be a public meeting, and council members are free to participate, but it won't be an action item, and it won't be a council workshop, it'll just be a staff-led workshop. Again, partially, this is being done just because we weren't able to align the schedules of the five of us, and I worked pretty hard to not hold council meetings where we knowingly will not have a council member present, you know, unless that council member says that it's fine to go ahead without them. Finally, I want to turn it over to the Centennial Committee. Sue and Barbara and Merv and Tom, I'm going to effectively include you as the, you're certainly, have been a huge contributor to this. So, welcome, and any update that you would like to provide?
We tried to reschedule the meeting for, so that Merv could be here. We were all going to fly to Utah to the ski resort, so that we could do it there. Didn't work out, couldn't find a big enough plane. This is Sue McLeod and Tom Burkato, as you know, and Barbara's going to be the cleanup hitter here. This is sort of a show-and-tell to give you some idea of what we have done, or tried to do, on souvenirs for the show, for the centennial year. It's taken a little longer, because there's no role model. We've had to feel our way in several instances. There's something in this for everyone, this just gives you an idea. We probably have, are going to have at the most, three dozen items. Right now, it's probably about two. And I would invite anyone, if they've got something that they think is, really would be saleable, that we haven't included or thought about, to call us and give us some idea about it. We're certainly open to suggestions. The, I'm not going to do things about the usual t-shirts and polo shirts and baseball caps, those we've got. So, we don't, can we get the whole picture? This, as you know, is our logo, and it is a city pin. As you'll see, I think I saw, Steve had one, and Chip has one, and it's a little smaller than usual. The color has come out, hasn't come out on this as well as it should, should. There we go. Thanks. Okay, so the logo is on everything that we have. This will be a website where you would go on and order whatever you want, and it would be mailed to whoever you wanted to go to, but the, you would pay by PayPal or a credit card, and the money would come directly to City Hall. It wouldn't go through, through the person who was doing the shipping and so forth. So one thing is Carmel by the Sea license plate frame. This is chrome-covered solid brass. I'm moving right along. We also have an exotic flashlight. As you will see, there is the flashlight, and then the blower one has LED lights on that just gives you, provide you some light. Then there's a, wait, 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 Tom. Then those LED lights also go to red and flash, so that you can use it as an emergency light as well. It's very lightweight, it's about so long, and has a lanyard that will, you know, connect with any, you could clip it on anything you want. Okay, shoot. Then for the dogs, this is a way for you to carry your roll of mutt mitts, and obviously, I don't need to explain much more, I don't think. I think it's pretty clear.
Go ahead, Tom, go ahead.
Also, for the dog family, the, what looks like just a little half-circle down here on the right, unzips and becomes an immediate bowl for water or for food, so we urge you to buy two. So we've got one for water and one for food. Prices will be added shortly. Then we've got four different colors of coffee mugs that have the logo on it. We have, as you see, it's etched with the logo for a wine glass. We also have a pub glass with the same, hey, don't go so fast, with the same, with the same logo. So whether you drink wine or beer, or both, you can order them both, okay? So here are the baseball caps I mentioned. The two on the left are plain old baseball caps. The one on the right has a light in the actual edge of the brim, and lights that are in the bill that come down. So, you know, if you're going hunting, you can take the lights with you to help you while you're hunting, or whatever. We also have cocktail napkins. Barbara specified that they be linen-like, so that they're very hardy, and we get, we bought them in bulk, so Hope Services is taking these and putting them into, breaking them down into fifty napkins to a package. For the chefs in the group, I guess we missed the Gourmet Fest, that's too bad. There is the logo for that. And then we have, this is a Chico bag, and my assistant here will show you what it looks like in person. The shipment just left my house today, and it holds forty pounds. It's washable, it folds into its own little sack, which also has Carmel Centennial logo on it. Are you going to go around and let everybody taste it? And lastly, but not leastly, leastly, we have a wine coaster that has a nice little bag that's embossed, but also with the logo on it. So when it's on the website, all, there is a description, a verbal description that goes along, gives you the measurements, and will give you the cost factor also. So I want to thank my assistant here, he's non-union.
Non-paid.
So, you know, we'll tell you when the website will be functional. We hope to have it up, testing by the next, this next, next weekend. One of the suggestions that came to us was somebody who went to Yosemite and came back with this corkscrew, which is in the shape of a wine bottle, and it's sort of a quasi-Swiss Army knife, because it's got all kinds of implements as well. It's fairly heavy. So we're having that done with a Carmel. If there's anybody from the tasting rooms here, we want to talk to you about this. And then, as I leave, I just want to say again, please, if you have any ideas of things that are unique and, you know, quality, we're trying to not do junk, we're trying to do some quality things, please, we could use all the help we can get. So, Tom, do you want to take up? I'm not, do I have to do something for you?
No, I'm good. So, thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Centennial Committee to officially launch the 100 Photos Project for 2016. for 2016. So what's the 100 Photos Project? It's basically between now and the end of the year, having our residents, our visitors, our non-residents take a picture in, here in Carmel, an image, and submit it into special boxes, drop boxes that we've set up at the two libraries, at the circulation desk, and out here in the hallway, that you can submit a four-by-six unmounted image. And at the end of the year, and this is being chaired by Peter Hiller, at the end of the year, we're going to select 100 photos that will be placed into the time capsule at the beginning of next year. So it's really an opportunity for the community to take a picture. They're only allowed to submit one. Our biggest challenge is going to be probably if we get 10,000 photos, but that's Peter's problem. But this is something that we'll have, that will be launching this week, and will also be part of our monthly column that appears in the Pine Cone at the first of every Friday of each month. So, thank you. I'm now going to turn, yes?
Just one maybe detailed question on that, but it, so that whatever is submitted will, if it's selected, will be actually in the time capsule?
In the time capsule, and the library is going to scan it before it goes, before we pack it up together.
So are there types of paper that one should print on to?
Yeah, we're asking for photo paper. It has to be on photo paper. It has to be unmounted. We also have, thanks to the library, we have special pencils that they can put on the back of the images, their name, all the necessary information. When they took it, it has to be an image that was taken in 2016.
Of Carmel? Something in Carmel?
Something in Carmel. Something that makes our community just really fabulous.
It's a really cool idea. Karen?
So that information's on the website? CarmelCentennial.com?
It will be, it'll actually be in the Pine Cone this coming Friday, and then we'll be adding it.
Tom, stand right there, would you? Thanks, I'll submit. I got it.
Okay, I'm now going to turn it over to Barbara Livingston.
It's supposed to be one of your favorite scenes.
Well, why don't you come up, Sue, next to Barbara? Let me take a picture of the two of you.
That's a good scene.
Council staff, Barbara Livingston. We are going to culminate our October 29th festivity with a street dance. So you know, we have the Centennial Parade, followed by lunch at Sunset Center, and then the street dance in the afternoon. Maybe we'll call it Centennial Swing Dancing Through the Decades. So it'll be, we'll have a dance band, and the restaurants in that block of Dolores, between Ocean and Seventh, will be key to providing wine and light foods, and we just expect it to be a wonderful, wonderful occasion. And so that's, the details are a bit sketchy now, but you'll be hearing more about it later. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Tom.
I've got a question for the Centennial Committee. In a near, maybe next time when you do an update, I've had several organizations that are very prominent in the city ask me how they can participate in the parade if they can't, they don't have the money for a float. So if you could kind of give us examples of how our organizations, whether it's the CRA, whether it's the innkeepers, who have been a part of our city for so long, how they might be able to participate? I think people are asking that question.
Asking all of us, too.
Okay.
Good. Well, thank you. I know that all three of you and Merv, when he's not skiing in Utah, are spending a lot of time on this, and it is much appreciated. So thank you on behalf of all of us. We'll now turn to public appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda, and if you would please provide your name for the record and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Barbara Livingston. Chip, it is really swell seeing you sit up there, and we're very happy to have you join us again in Carmel. And Mike, I know you're very happy to be once again sitting there. And thank you all, thank you so much for what you did for Carmel to fill that space before Chip. Thank you so much. Part two of the CRA Centennial Series, Reliving Our History, will be presented March 17, that's Thursday, March 17, when Erin Gaffiel will talk about her great-great-grandmother, Jane Gallatin Powers. The talk will be at Carpenter Hall, and you all know where that is, of course, and begins at 5:00 PM. We had a standing room only for Jack Galante in January. We expect the same for Erin Gaffiel's talk. Jane Gallatin Powers was a fascinating woman, and you know she was the wife of one of Carmel's co-founders, Frank Powers, and she is going to be a riveting subject. So we hope to see all of you Thursday, March 17, at Carpenter Hall. Thank you very much.
Mayor Burnett, council. I am not the resident of your fair city, but I am here to represent the veterans in your city and the veterans in county. And we'll give this to the city clerk. Some of you may know, some of you may not, on February the 9th, the county proclaimed 2016 as the year of the veteran in Monterey County. That was done because there are significant events that will happen very seldom that are all happening in this one year. The one I know is close to Mayor Burnett's heart is the opening of the cemetery. The first phase of that cemetery is under construction now, and we hope to reopen late summer, early fall for that first Phase 1. Secondly, the new VA DOD clinic is due to open this fall. It will serve all the veterans in Carmel, all the veterans in the area, and our active-duty military and their dependents. It's a magnificent facility. Thirdly, there is a groundbreaking for the Veterans Transition Center this year that, when complete, will double the capacity of that magnificent center out there. Something that most people don't consider important, but this year, the Monterey County Veterans Court began to service veterans that come before them with records that need but can be taken care of in that method. And lastly, this August will be the third biannual homeless veteran stand-down that happened out on Fort Ord. So for all of these reasons, the county has declared then 2016 the year of the veteran in Monterey County. On February 17th, the city of Marina did the same. This Thursday, the city of Seaside is scheduled to do the same. And I have given the smaller version of this to help you compose such a document for the city of Carmel. I would hope that you will carry forth to do that, and should you decide to do that, please contact the leadership at Post 512 for someone to accept it and for a place to display it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and that is quite an impressive list of accomplishments, and of course, it wouldn't have happened without the very active and organized veterans community in this area. So thank you for your substantial part in contributing to that, and of course, thank you for all that you've done for our country. Stacy.
Hello, Stacy Mahin, president of the Forest Theater Guild, and I wanted to have you all mark your calendars for a couple of very important dates. The first one is June 1st, Wednesday, June 1st. That will be the first film in the forest, assuming, fingers crossed, that everything opens on time with the Forest Theater. So June 1st will be Mamma Mia. It'll be our first film, so come that night. The other very important date is June 23rd. That will be the opening of The Borrowers, which is going to be the first live production musical at the Forest Theater that will be directed by Walt Defaria. So please put on your calendars those dates. And lastly, this Friday, my husband is having his knee surgery from the injuries he sustained in a bicycle accident last year almost exactly this time. So I just want to bring that up to remind everybody here, here, to just please drive safely. We have lots of trees, lots of bushes, lots of hidden driveways. Just pay attention when you're driving, because you don't always see the kids on bikes, the people on bikes, and the pedestrians. So just pay attention and keep your eyes on the road. Thanks.
Thank you, Stacy. And as a dad with a four-year-old who just got his big-boy bicycle, I would emphasize that, please drive safely. Thank you.
Gary Richard Arnold, mayor, council people. There's something really bad about these three counties and the fact that they're losing their ability to continue self-government. And that has to do with a plan that's been laid out a long time ago by Woodrow Wilson's advisor, Colonel House. He wrote a book called Philip Drew Administrator, in which he advocated an American dictatorship, including the North American Union. Again, Rockefeller wrote a book called New Federalism and included the same plan. In England, during the Second World War, the Fabian Socialist Society, using Cecil Rhodes' money, had that country broken down so that they lost much of its control, as did Belgium and France. The Committee for Economic Democracy, which has a majority members of the Private Council on Foreign Relations, advocates 80% reduction in local self-government units. Ambag, these regional areas, are designed in order to take your authority away and cut it down to a very small group of regions, and they're talking about even the states, and creating the North American Union. There's a group called ICLI. It's funded by both the United Nations and the World Bank, and they put together an Agenda 21 program for all three counties in here, signed by Sam Farr, and it was funded by the United Nations Associations of New Haven and San Francisco and Santa Cruz. In addition, there have been exposes on that, The Invisible Government by Dan Smoot, America's Secret Establishment by Mr. Sutton, and Mr. William Dumhoff, Who Rules America Now? But the powerful people such as Marshall Field and the Rockefeller family put together the Chicago University called the Public Administration Clearinghouse, in which they controlled, they set up two dozen fronts, and it includes the Municipal Association of Finance Ministers, International City Managers Association, the American Public Workers Association, et cetera, in order to massage their minds to go for this new world government. In addition, the strongest lobby in the state is Rockefeller, put together by IBM, Chase Manhattan Bank, and the whole Rockefeller family. It's called Rockefeller, it's called California Forward. It's funded by Irvine, who runs AP now. It's run by Packard, and it's run by Commonwealth, and it's run by CAHAs, and they have huge funds. They protect themselves, as did Colonel House when he set up the Federal Reserve, and let the robber barons have their tax-exempt foundations, and they twiddle out their charities to keep you quiet. But this regional activity is going on at Ambag. They're putting in stakeholders that are making policies for people that you should be there making the policies. Kick the damn stakeholders out, retain your sovereignty and your oath to the Constitution, which we heard a few minutes ago. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you to everyone being here, bringing government close, close to all of you and having a robust civil process, which is exactly what we all want. Please.
Hi. My name is Teresa Bradford, and four years ago, I opened up a store on Ocean and Monteverde on the corner, and I came into this community and this town after having a store down in Big Sur for 30 years at the Big Sur River Inn. And I chose Carmel because of the quality and the integrity, and I spent about a year going through the entire Monterey Peninsula before I landed here. So get to the point. There was a particular thing I liked about Carmel, and I still do, is the freedom and the ease. And about a year ago, a particular cosmetic store opened, and they had a tray in there in, on the sidewalk. I figured, oh, I don't care. They're two blocks up. Well, now, right next door, I have a particular person soliciting right on the sidewalk, and the only reason truly why I'm here is my customers have come to me and said they won't walk down that side of the street. And when they, and I, believe me, I get, at least without exaggeration, to a day. And they asked me what I think. What am I going to, what am I going to do about it? So I called up Al of the city. He went up to where the Tea Rose was, is a cosmetic store, and they have two doors, they have two people, and they are accosting very aggressively, getting people, you know, hey, here's a sample, and come on in, and they do a certain way where they kind of get their hand around, you know, bring them in, and then where the material goods was, there's another one that just moved in. And so I've gone over there. It's none of my business to go over there. It's your business. Al has gone and said, you can't do this. You can't stand in the sidewalk, and you can't stand at the door. As soon as he goes around the corner and comes back to his little office, they're right back out there. And it's not Carmel. It is, in my opinion, the, customers should have the right to walk into a store, not to be accosted and solicited outside as they're going about their day, walking through this beautiful town. And that's all I have to say.
If you wouldn't mind providing your contact information to Mark, sitting right here. He works with Al, and, okay, but I think that this would be something that Mark's office would fall, need to follow up on, and I appreciate you bringing that to the council and the community's attention. Karen?
Hi, Karen Ferlato. Actually, my husband was going to come and make similar comments today, because there's a third store as well, which is up one store, you know, one store west of Dolores on the north side of the street, and they do the same thing with the trays and bringing you in and so on and so forth. But that isn't what I wanted to talk about, but I do concur that it's happening, and I have to walk by there when I work, and it is somewhat uncomfortable to be so closely invited in. So I do, I have talked to Mark about it, and I think they are working on it, but it is happening. I did want to announce that the Forest and Beach is having our Arbor Day on April 30th at First Murphy Park. We're going to plant some more trees, finish some of the planting there, enhance the sprinkler systems, and I know that's two months away, but I know you're all very busy, and you're going to want to put this on your calendar. We may have a Daisy troop there to help Sebastian this year with the planting, so that should be fun. We're engaging the Carmel Heritage as well, and we hope that they'll be able to have docent so that the house can be open the same day. So we're going to make it a centennial-type affair. So I did want to invite you to that. The last thing I wanted to say is I haven't heard much lately about the program to stop the illegal short-term rentals, and there's one in my neighborhood. I've reported it at least twice. It's operating almost weekly, constantly, and it's not really a bothersome one, but it is there, and I don't see, over these many months, that any progress has been made in stopping that particular one. There's another one on Ridgewood Street that's operating, and I know they're out throughout the city. I don't think it's fair to our local hotel people who spend a lot of time, money, energy, our Chamber of Commerce inviting them. They have to have safety features. They have to have a lot of things. It's just not fair. It's also not fair to our residents who chose not to buy a home next to a B&amp;B or a hotel, who bought a home in a neighborhood and should be able to expect a neighborhood, not an in-and-out, in-and-out, sometimes two and three times a week. So I do hope we'll get some progress report. I wish the city had a system that they could just put out a blanket, a letter to everybody stating, we do have a short-term rental ban. If you're renting, please be put on notice. And I mean, I don't think it would hurt to send this out to everybody in the city if we do have the means to do that as a first step. I know there's, there are other things being done, but we're not hearing about what those things are, and I'm not seeing progress on the ones that particularly interest me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Don provided an update a number of months ago. Don, if you are able to, at the April meeting, provide an update on progress and...
I could attempt to do that, but nothing has reached my desk yet, so.
Okay, well.
I'll work on it.
I think it's a good request. It's something that the council and the community cares a lot about, and having an update at the next meeting, I think, is a very reasonable ask. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council members, distinguished guests, and staff. We've been evaluating our, we've had, I've had a talk with several of my members, and I come to you tonight with a heavy heart, this evening. First of all, on behalf of the American Legion, I want to apologize that we, as veterans, have failed our mission. We have failed to educate the community about our fallen comrades. We have failed to educate the community, state, and nation... We have failed to educate the community, state, and nation about the price that is paid for freedom. We also have failed our mission in the sense of working with the city council and the members of the community of Carmel. So on behalf of the American Legion and its veterans, we feel obligated to pay the $170. Mr. Martin reminded us of the cost and the sanctity of what the War Memorial Fountain means to us veterans. We have failed our comrades and our forefathers for not protecting it and educating the community around it. I hope that you will accept our $170, $70 on behalf of the veterans in Carmel, that the community, because we, as veterans, do not think that any taxpayer should have to pay this bill because of our failed mission. We feel that this is our obligation, the obligation of our veterans, in enforcing our mission, to guide and protect all historical memorials, not only in Carmel, but as the American Legion throughout the land. Also, on behalf of the city's 100th Centennial of Carmel by the Sea, we are also asking that you listen to our project this evening, and with an open mind, and understand our historical significance of what we, as veterans, are obligated to do here in Carmel. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you very much, and let me just comment that others have made a similar offer, I appreciate that. I think, you know, Ken and I both asked whether, you know, whether we could step forward. We'll have to confer with our police chief about how to proceed, because, again, as I believe that I've explained, or maybe I haven't explained publicly enough, that there's really sort of two sides to the house. One is the civil side, and that's the side that the city council's in charge of. The police side is separate, and the city council does not get involved in that, we legally cannot, and we don't. And although it, you know, may be at times tempting to do so, you know, that is crossing a line that's not appropriate for an elected official. For example, you know, we read in other communities about elected officials trying to fix tickets and so forth. That's the thing that we work hard to avoid by having that line. So in terms of the police issue, the city council is not involved, I'm not involved in that, and that's something to talk with our police chief about. I really appreciate you coming forward and making that offer.
And on behalf of the veterans of Carmel, too, I mean, we were very thankful for the apologies, and we understand that there was no malicious intent on anyone's behalf. But after reevaluating it, we feel that because we failed our mission to educate the council, the council gave the authority to put the banner on the War Memorial. So therefore, we, as veterans, have failed our communications with the city and its community, and that if we had been better off doing our job, then that authorization would have never existed. We would have never had the problems that have been created over this. We feel that as a commitment to our War Memorial, that this is an opportunity for us to step up and say, you know, if there was no malicious intent on anyone's behalf, then there should be no one penalized or have to pay that, and certainly not the taxpayers. We feel that this is an obligation and our burden, and that we feel, being honorable in a situation like this, we feel that we're the ones who should offer up this. And so, thank you.
Well, thank you again. Please.
Mayor, council, Judy Rifeiroso here, hi. First, I'd like to give a big thank you to the current vice chair of the Forest and Beach Commission. Without her emails, I would have no idea what's going on in the city regarding beach fires and propane fireplaces. I'm happy that the Pinecone brought some of these issues forward, but rather than "she said she said," nice, I thought I would provide the actual documents, so there is no chance for misunderstanding or misinterpretation. I've assembled a packet of public emails, letters, and documents, providing a timeline of what has been happening in the city regarding fires. I would like this document put into public record. It starts with the August 4th email calling for a special meeting, of which the Forest and Beach Commission was not made aware of, and ends with the most recent letter I received from Michael Watson of the Coastal Commission dated February 25, 16. I was concerned when I saw the email dated 2/24/16 from the aforementioned commissioner, stating that there would be another special meeting for a propane-only pilot so that it can get resolved before the election. I wonder if there was a deadline that the Coastal Commission placed on the city, so I asked Mike Watson. I received the following email reply from Mike Watson of the Coastal Commission on February 25th. "There is no deadline that the city must adhere to. However, the city's urgency ordinance currently prohibits beach fires on weekends and holidays, and the public has not provided the opportunity to enjoy this recreational activity while that is in effect. We would like to open that up as soon as possible. Our preference would be for the city to rescind the ordinance and work cooperatively with interested parties on the development of a management plan that provides recreational opportunities and protects beach resources. Let me know if I can be of further assistance. Mike." Finally, please be aware that these documents that I'm going to give you all revolve around special meetings, meetings that only need to be noticed 48 hours prior. This is not enough time for working families to rearrange schedules and take time off to show up. Please, let's return to conducting politics at regularly scheduled city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, for your comments.
Hello, everybody. Christine Sandin, Executive Director of Sunset Center. Welcome, Chip. Greetings, council. Thank you, Mike, for all your help over the last few months. I just wanted to say, I'm pretty comfortable speaking on behalf of our Board of Trustees and myself and my staff, that it's truly, truly an honor for us to be given the opportunity to act as stewards of such a magnificent community asset as the Sunset Center each and every day, and we appreciate the spirit of the negotiation so far on our operating agreement. And we're confident that our partnership with the city is the best possible model for what this community's objectives are for the center. And we're just really excited and poised to move forward in a really visionary and strategic future, so we're looking forward to working that out with you all. As you know, we're also involved in campus planning, that's the next phase of development for us, so stay tuned on those efforts. Mostly, just wanted to give you a couple announcements, because there's so many exciting things happening at Sunset Center this spring. As Vice Mayor Talmadge already mentioned, we have the Panetta Institute. But long before they arrive on the 14th, we actually have the Carmel Unified School District Choral Concert tomorrow night at 7:00. We have a plethora of events, artist workshops, candidate forums, gallery openings, library events, and so much more happening this spring. So please be sure to stay apprised by way of our website, sunsetcenter.org. And we're trying to keep the emails that we send down, so if you could get your information on the website, that would be great. And also, we have on March 9th, an event called Serial, and I just wanted to inform everyone that may not know, this is a really unique event, it's based on the most widely downloaded podcast in all time, it's the creators of this podcast program, 5 million downloads. And we're doing a special student ticket price for, it's very popular among students. So if you have college students, high school students, it's a $25 ticket, again, that's on March 9th. Also, I believe that I heard that the Panetta Institute broadcasts their series to over 23 networks, including C-SPAN, so this is magnificent exposure for Sunset Center and for the city. And also, I wanted to let you know that our Peter Frampton event later this spring is also being filmed by Access Television, which is one of the largest content providers for entertainment in the country. So we're really excited about that exposure for Sunset Center as well. We have two sold-out shows with Jackson Brown this spring. I'm sorry for those of you who didn't get tickets, but I'd like to publicly explain that it is because the demand for this artist is so great, that literally, we did sell out in 10 minutes, we really, really did, both shows, because this is an artist that normally plays 4,000-seat venues. So that's just the way it happens. There were no problems with our ticketing system, nothing like that. And last but not least, we want to remind you, save-the-date card just went out for our gala, which is May 14th this year, and thank you very much. We received approval a while back to hold the gala in the north parking lot this year, because it's grown so much. So we'll look for you all there. Thank you.
Christine, thank you very much for all those great updates.
For once, I beat her to the podium. Stephen Moore, PAC Rep Theater, Mayor, Council, City Staff. On behalf of PAC Rep, the staff, and the artists, and our community of 25,000 ticket holders, we'd like to welcome Chip back to the city of Carmel. We are thrilled that you're coming back, it's great that someone returns. This place is like a magnet, and it's just, you guys have proved it by hiring this guy back, it's just really wonderful. I wanted to thank the city council for the workshop yesterday. It's the first time I'd attended one of those, I found it really informative, I think it's great that you're gonna follow up with those, you know, breaking it down, looking at those items. I did wanna kind of put a concept out there for you real quick, because we brought up the Forest Theater and the fact that it was, you know, needs a little work on some of the numbers, but I was thinking about it last night, and Sunset Center provides such an immense service to the city of Carmel. You know, the city subsidizes Sunset, many hundreds of thousands of dollars, and for that, what do we get? We get all these performances, you know, dozens and dozens, I don't know, 80, 90, 100 performances a year, 150 performances a year, whatever it is, and that's what we get. And I was thinking, if you would, as we go into the, to discuss the fees and the facilities with future council members, present council members, the Forest Theater provides that same service, hundreds of performances for the community. And for that, we do it for nothing. Actually, we pay the city of Carmel for the honor to provide this fabulous service. So when you look at what we subsidize, what we value here in Carmel, what are the benefits to the residents, just as thousands of audience members go to Sunset and receive that benefit, the same benefit is given to the residents and the visitors here in Carmel by the other artistic facilities. And so, you know, when we come to that discussion, keep that in the back of your mind. Lastly, I just wanted to give you a little information on our centennial activities. We're starting our first centennial activity, it's actually coming up Saturday night, March 12th, with our Bohemian Revel Party of the Century. See what we did there with the century thing? And that's gonna be at Quail Lodge, March 12th. Then we will be performing Wizard of Oz, which, historically speaking, we first performed almost 20 years ago. That will be at the Forest Theater. Then at the Forest Theater 12th Night, which was the first Shakespearean production done in Carmel, 1911, at the outdoor Forest Theater. So we'll be mounting that as one of our contributions to the centennial. And then, and this is new, and we're very excited about it, we are going to launch a new event this year, we hope it turns into an annual event, it's gonna be called the Bohemian of the Year. And we're going to honor someone in the community who has maintained, supported, guided over one of the many or many bohemian aspects and characteristics of Carmel by the Sea. So we're really excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And I apologize, Barbara, but I think you've already spoken...
I know I did, I forgot to invite you all to the Carmel Residents Association Candidates' Forum on March the 8th at 7:00 in Carpenter Hall.
Say it quickly, because you can't speak twice. Anyone else wish to speak? Cindy.
Mayor Burnett, members of the council, my name is Cindy Lloyd, and my sister sent me an email the other day and said, I read in the Pinecone that you're referred to as a resident of Carmel. Are you really a resident, since you live in the sphere of influence? Surely, you're a Carmelite, because you were born there, so that led to a big discussion between my sister and me. So I was born here, but I do live in the sphere of influence, I am not a voting member of the city. However, I am delighted to welcome Chip to Carmel. However, it's a return welcome, I understand. I wasn't involved when Chip was here before and didn't know him, but I've been delighted to meet him and his family, and I'm so glad you included the character of Carmel as something that you all uphold and defend in your oath of office. That, I hope, includes not only the white sands of Carmel Beach, but the beautiful and unfortunately somewhat overlooked 34 acres of Mission Trail Nature Preserve, which we all enjoy on the other side of the town. I would also like to recognize two men who have been exceedingly gracious, understanding, and upholding their honor in recent months, and that is Chief Calhoun and Commander Tomasi. They have been absolutely wonderful, and I think we're so fortunate that this city has Chip to be the administrator, and Mike Calhoun and Paul Tomasi over in the Police Department, because this group before us is going to change, but they will be here and they will remain. So thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Cindy, for those kind and appropriate comments. Anyone else wish to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mike.
I, too, would like to say, from the hearts of the residents of Carmel, welcome home, Chip. We're really glad to see you're back.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close public comment, move on to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on consent, I will summarize them, and then ask council members and then the public if there's desire to pull any items. First are minutes from three meetings. Next is the check register, and the check register is going to be continued to the next, we didn't have an opportunity to have it reviewed and signed by our treasurer, and so that'll come back next month. Monthly reports for contracts, community planning and building, police, fire, ambulance, and beach reports, Public Records Act, Foresters Report, and City Treasurers Report. We have an update on the Forest Theater renovation. We have an authorization for me to send a letter to the mayor of Petra, Spain, inviting our sister city to attend our centennial celebration, or the mayor to attend. The whole city's welcome, too. Consideration of a resolution authorizing a fee waiver for $1,575 for Run in the Name of Love, and a second fee waiver for the 23rd Annual Carmel Art Festival on May 12 through the 15th. Authorization of amendments for a professional services agreement for contract planning of an amount not to exceed $78,880. Award of a contract for an audio production group for the Sunset Center Audio Replacement and Installation Project. Authorizing issuance of a request for proposals for facilitated evaluation service. Thank you, Victoria, for suggesting this and bringing this forward. And receive an update on revisions made to council and board commission member handbooks, which was quite a lengthy document. But thank you for everyone on our staff who pulled that together and updated that. So of those items, any member of the council wish to pull any items? Yes, Victoria?
I'm afraid I have some to pull, I hope they're all brief. Six E, which is the Forester Report, seven, which is the Forest Theater Update, eight, which is the Petra Letter, I already warned you about that one, and 13, the evaluation service that I had suggested before.
Okay. Anyone else?
I want to pull three of the same that Victoria pulled, so...
Well, they're pulled, too late. Any, okay, any member of the public wish to pull any items that have not yet been pulled? Okay, I will bring it back and entertain a motion for item, we'll just pull all of item six, it'll be easier, I think, for item four, five, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 14.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. Victoria, do you want to summarize your reason for pulling the Foresters Report?
Sure. I had just asked staff last week, so everybody's well apprised that I was wondering about this, whether in our public-private-planted-removed report that we really appreciate receiving, I do, and I think it was Ken's suggestion originally, but it's terrific that we have it. I don't know if the Forest Theater is in there somewhere, and if it is there, it's certainly not identified as such, so I just wondered if I could get that question answered. And I know Mike Branson said he might be here, oh, there he is, hi, Mike, to just tell us if it's in there as either construction, or I don't know if it would be public, construction or private, because it's sort of a private project, and if it's not in there, maybe we could get in there in the future.
The current report that you have before you, the January report, does not have any trees related to Forest Theater. In the wind event we had on the evening of January 31st, we did lose a couple trees in the construction area, one that sort of was listing a little bit, and had to be removed, and the adjacent tree, which I felt was at risk, had to be removed as well. Since those occurred in the February, they wouldn't be reflected in... Since those occurred in the February, they wouldn't be reflected until we get the February report and probably would be in the notes that I provide at the bottom. Some of the early removals that were done at the very beginning of the project, I don't think I was providing a Forester Report to the council at that time. I think I just didn't start till, or maybe I did. I don't know if those, I can't confirm that those were reflected in here back in whenever that project started last spring.
Okay. So 2015, you do have 2015 numbers here.
That's year-to-date. So that could be reflected.
It's rolling? No.
That's what we completed in calendar year 2015.
Right, okay.
So if they are, if they were in the Forester Report that I provide to the Forest and Beach Commission, they would be reflective in those numbers. And there were six trees that were removed at the very beginning of the project.
That were probably scheduled to be removed by the plan.
They were in the plans, in the construction zone and were approved as part of the project to be.
So this project is a very unusual one because it's a construction activity, but we are the client. We are the city, it's the client. So is it public or construction?
It's public property. It's a public, you know, zone, parkland and just like any public right-of-way.
So my request would be, could we get a line for just this special project because it is, or just an asterisk or something that tells us what relates to that? Because we are sort of stewards of that project in a different way than we are about a private project that might come across the transom.
Yeah, I can provide that in the notes below if that's, is that okay?
And could it be looking back so we can get the full sense of the beginning of the project to date?
Certainly.
Okay.
Follow-up on that. As far as my knowledge, those are the only trees that we've had to remove. There were some other trees that were marked as tentative, possible, but I think the construction activities and massaging things avoided all the other trees that were potential, potential removes.
Okay. So that would be great to keep our eyes on it too. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. And we have, as a side note, there was another tree near the concession stand that actually had some of the same issues as those last two trees that had to be removed as far as meeting an ADA agreed for an ADA pathway, but between the architects and the project manager and myself came up with a way to redesign that section of the pathway and save that tree.
And do we, since we do have always removals and plantings and prunings, do we have a plan for either the ones that were planned to be removed and then, of course, were removed and then also the accidental losses?
There.
Is there a plan for getting it square in the?
That's the intent, I think. Even in the plan specs, it talks about replacing at least a one-to-one for trees that had to be removed or removed. We haven't done any scaling of that yet, kind of waiting for the whole thing to kind of.
Settle.
Settle down so we know where opportunities are.
Thank you for looking, doing that, adding that in later. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Any other questions?
Steve, go ahead.
I just had one question, Mike. I wasn't going to ask you this, but on your Forester Report for January, you show 123 for private activities, 123 trees taken out. I don't think that number is right.
You are incorrect. I am incorrect. You are correct.
Okay.
That should be.
Should be, just should be 24.
24, correct. Sorry.
Because I know Karen would be a little upset if we've already passed the 2015 record.
At a good pace, yeah.
In one, in one.
Yeah, no, you're correct. That should be 24 for 2016. Correct.
Ken?
And Mike?
Yes, sir.
Concern here, Mike, is the number of upper campy trees that came out in January '42 and the number that were planted. And I know it's not sequential, but to lose 42 upper campy trees and to plant four.
Yeah, well, that.
We hope to make that up during the course of the year so we have at least a one-to-one.
That's always our objective, to continue to plant trees, make up those deficits. As a note, that was when we had our grid pruning contractor in town and for two and a half weeks and they did a blitz of about 35 of those trees. The rest were done by staff, so.
And the ones we're replanting now are good-sized, bigger?
We're trying to get bigger ones. Some of the Monterey pines still will be on the small side, but some of the other trees we're planting, we're moving 15 gallons or in some cases in the downtown area, we'll move into larger sizes as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mike. Can I actually raise the same question or made the same observation to Chip this afternoon? It's a number that we all follow. I think it was Karen who originally suggested that we have this report come to us. So thank you for whoever idea that was, I think Karen. Victoria, are we good with that item? Let me open it to the public since we pulled it off of consent.
I wasn't the only one. Did you pull that? Okay, you're good.
For any public comment on the, on item six.
Yes, Karen Ferlito. One of the things that's very, very important for you all as you're doing your budget considerations is to replace all of these trees that we're taking out, hundreds over the last two years. On a one-for-one basis, we can plant the trees, but we also have to have the staff that's going to be able to water and care for those trees for at least a couple of years. So those positions need to be funded and it will take a while. As far as trees on private property, which we have also lost a considerable number of, some of those trees won't be able to be replaced because there's no room left for them with some of the larger homes that are being built or trying to fit them in behind a shaded fence is always dicey. Several years ago, you passed a tree replacement tagging program. This is not fully in effect. We hope to, at our next Forest and Beach meeting, receive an update on what progress staff has made with redesigning the permit so that it's clearer. Often, an agent for the owner will pick up the permit and that agent, the tree company, they could care less about planting that replacement tree and some of the paperwork never even gets to the owner. So the owner doesn't even know. So there's a lot to making that program actually start to work. And as I said, we're going to get a report, an update on it in our March 17th meeting. But please, 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 in your budget deliberations, consider that we have to care for these replacement trees and it is vitally important if we're going to continue to live in an urban forest that we replace public and private trees. Thank you so much for your interest. I'm glad you're reading the Foresters Report and it is a report in progress. We keep adding more and more detail to it so that it becomes more meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Stephen Moore, PAC Rep Theater. These two trees that were lost at the forest due to the construction up there, I'm hoping that they get replaced in those spots where they, where they went down. As you recall, from the last, you know, presentation by Chris Wozniak, that whole handicap space and the box office space was designed specifically around those two trees. And now with those true two trees gone, it's really barren there. It's obviously missing something because it is. And I don't know if it's possible to get, you know, large trees, you know, in there to replace those. Those of you who don't attend often, these trees were so big, they framed the right side of the stage. So when you looked at the shows, you would see this giant tree coming over from stage right and all lit up. And so that's a big hole now in the view. So I'm hoping that not only trees get replaced around town on the property, but in those two specific spots that they were, that the whole thing was designed around. So I'm hoping. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, for your comments and suggestions. Anyone else? We'll close public comment, entertain a motion for approval of item six, monthly reports.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye passes unanimously. Technically, it's receiving, it's not approving, but I think Ashley understood what I was trying to say. Next, Victoria, you pulled item seven.
Right.
If you can briefly summarize the reason and then.
Yeah, I mean, I was so appreciative that we got the update of Forest Theater last month. We, it was, I think, Steve Dallas, I don't want to speak for him, but I think the two of us had some unfinished questions from the first, from that effort. And one of them, the main one, was that we had a work start date of, I think, around June 1st and an original opening date of around November 1st. And the report we got at last month's, at a staff report, explained some of that delay, maybe 30 to 40 percent, maybe 30 percent of the delay. And so what we were looking for was more, or at least what I was looking for was more just a, more of a normal report about what sorts of things are happening there that caused that delay. Part of that was, could you go back and confer with everyone and make sure we're really going to make that date? And that question seems to have been answered in the staff report. We really look like we're going to make that date. But the other part was not answered in the follow-up staff report, which is what explains the 60 or 70 percent of the delay? It's just, you know, again, since we're, this is a very special project. We are the clients of the project and it's very unusual for us not to have informa, I think, a client not to have information about, you know, the sort of cause of delays. So it could be, you know, it could be almost anything and often it's nobody's fault. It's just something didn't show up on time or there was a condition on the ground that was not anticipated or, you know, somebody miscommunicated something. So it's not about, you know, any blame or anything. It's just, we want to know what's going on on our project. So if somebody could either, I don't think it's possible probably to answer it right now, but I'm resubmitting my question from last month to get a thorough understanding of not just the, some of the delays, but the whole, all the changes, just the nature of what's going on on the site that accounts for missing the November date.
So Victoria, there's sort of two things going on. One is looking forward, I think primarily the council wanted to make sure everything could be done to.
Right.
To get this project open as soon as possible.
By the summer, right.
And from my read of the staff report, staff have done an excellent job of doing that. In fact, it now looks like it'll be open earlier than originally, than we were told last month.
Right.
What you're talking about is a retrospective look, presumably in order to learn from any mistakes or what is the reason for looking back? I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I just want to understand or help staff understand your request.
Yeah, I think it's just very unusual not to. I think when you have a project that you've commissioned, we have a client that commissioned a project and we're told it'll be finished November 1st, but it's not, I mean, we gained two weeks since last month, but I mean, we're talking about more than 100 percent delay on the project. It's just unusual not to have an explanation for that. It's not so much that there's any purpose to it, it's that it's our responsibility, I think, as a community that commissioned the project, to keep an eye on the project as the client. So, you know, I think it's strange to be in the dark about something like that, in my view. And it's not, there's nothing nefarious. I just think, you know, and what's weird about it too is we got explanations for, again, some of the change orders, but there's 10 times more change orders that didn't have just a notation of what sorts of things they were about. So it's just, it's just strange, I think. So that was my purpose. Let's have it, you know, daylight's the best.
So I don't know if Rob or who the right person is to speak to this, but if, I'm trying to minimize the burden on staff and if it's possible to answer that question just now in a few minutes, maybe that would be the least burdensome or if you'd prefer, maybe there's some other way of answering this question, but.
Would it be helpful if, because the project is almost done, if we had a tour of the project at this point?
Yes.
I mean, it sounds like that would be good for all of us.
I think a lot of us have been up there, but I think as a group, it would be helpful.
So maybe at the next city council meeting, during tours of inspection, we could have that as part of, to see what's going on.
Could be a nice final meeting.
Good, okay. I think we have a solution. Thank you for being a problem solver, Carrie. Ken?
I pulled this issue for two reasons. One is I wanted an update on the trees because I understand there is some significant tree loss up there and I think we got that earlier, but I think what we need now is a plan about how to replace those trees. And I do think it's important to replace them with the biggest species we can possibly get in there. So my concerns about how this happened, I think, have been addressed. The plan for how to solve it has not been addressed and so I want to be real clear that I'd like to see what that plan is at a later date. Second issue I wanted to say, sort of built off of what Victoria said, I think we need to keep the urgency here. You know, to me, the date was never May 1st. May 1st was the latest date. And when I read the staff report, it sort of accepts the May 1st date. Well, if we have a rainy season in March, which we potentially are going to have, I don't want to find that the May 1st date starts to slide. So the May 1st date needs to be absolutely no later than. And we heard that the group would like to move in in April sometime. So if the, if the real date is early in April, that's better news. But there's no margin of error with a May 1st date and so we shouldn't be thinking about a May 1st date. We should be thinking about a date three weeks, four weeks earlier than that. And we're sort of thinking, well, the pressure's off here. Well, if we have a wet March, the pressure's not off here, we're going to miss the date. So I'm trying to convey a sense of urgency here.
So I would just observe that we have a brand-new city administrator as of this week who has extensive experience managing much more complex projects than this. And I would encourage the council to give Chip a chance to catch his breath. I think that he hears the council's focus and very legitimate focus on this project and, you know, I would, and would not and will not put him on the spot tonight, but I think that the council should have confidence that we have somebody who understands how to, you know, manage these things. And I think raising the questions at this point, you know, Chip's, I'm sure, hearing all of that and I think Carrie's suggestion is a good one. It would be great to, yeah, have a little celebration, frankly, because we all know that this has been a big undertaking and an unexpected undertaking that we all have, you know, mostly the user groups and the audience has had a significant sacrifice to get to. Let me open it for public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the council on the Forest Theater renovation?
I think it's an excellent idea to have a tour. I wish you'd had one sooner. And I'd also like to have you invite the Forest and Beach Commission and the Planning Commission to join you up there. I think there were some mistakes made through haste and when it was supposed to be a triage, Forest and Beach was not even invited to come to any meetings about the trees. We were invited to go up there on a different time, but not in the planning stages. So we had no input about what trees we felt were significant and what needed to be done. And when we did go up there, we were rather horrified by what had happened on the east pathway with regard to cutting trenches and tree roots and the tree roots weren't covered. Nothing was kept wet. There was missing tree protection. Some tree protection was put up after that. Two weeks ago, I think it was, maybe three weeks ago, I walked around and saw lots of missing tree protection. It was called to the attention and some of that has been rectified. But it was very clear that when inspections were being made by the planning department, no one was saying, where is the missing tree protection? So I think our, what we can learn from this and maybe why Victoria might have brought this up and Ken brought this up is where were, were there some mistakes made? And not to, you know, fire anybody or get anybody in big trouble, but how could we do a better job? Because if we as the city can't provide the very best security for our trees, the very best job of protecting them and planning for them, it's very hard to expect private people and private contractors to be doing that on their property. We need to set the example. And I've been quite disappointed with the care taken of the trees up there. As far as replacing them with the largest, we have to think about what really belongs there, which was Monterey pines and oaks. Monterey pines only come in small, native Monterey plains only come small. If we just stick a big tree in there to cover up something, it may not be the tree we want for the future. So we have to be careful what we do put in there and take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And I know you brought this to the city's attention, I believe, at least twice and, you know, your point is right on. You shouldn't have to do it even once. And so we certainly have some learning to do and like I mentioned, I think that with our new city administrator with a lot of experience and such things, we'll, we will do better going forward. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to council and.
Move acceptance.
Okay.
Circle seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye passes unanimously. And item eight, sorry, I gotta scroll back up.
This is the mayor, this is the letter to the mayor.
The Petra Letter and. The Petra letter and Victoria gave me a heads up as to why she wanted to pull it, but why don't you?
It's a very small point, but I just thought we were sending an invitation halfway around the world. It would be nice if we included airfare in the invitation. We were paying for everything else and I just felt like it was one of those things like you had to pay to accept a gift. So I didn't want us to come off as a little miserly. So I don't know what the council's, it's just a council question if that could be added to the letter and I don't know if there's any appetite for it, but it seems like a small addition to make the invitation more whole.
And I know this issue has been discussed and I don't want to put you on the spot, Ashley, but I know you've researched this a bit. I don't know if there is anything that you want to add to that question. I mean, ultimately, it's a policy question of the council, but Ashley did look into some of the history to inform, inform this, so.
So I think Sue was aware in 1963, which is when we established our relationship with Petra, Evan Whittlesley, who was the mayor then, was offered a trip there with his family. My understanding from the pine cone is that his daughter who went along, who's Debbie Sharp, the pine cone says her fare was not paid for, but Sue has talked to Debbie, who remembers things differently. And that's basically all of the information I could find gleaning back through the resolutions and the meeting minutes. There've been, from what I can see, three or four visits back and forth. The latest one would have been in the early 1970s, but it's been quite a while since the council of Petra have reached out to the council in Carmel and vice versa.
Any other council comments before I take it to public comment?
I think that.
Or council questions?
I think that the conservative approach here is because this council has been criticized for spending money and I think that's why there's a conservative approach here. So I think reaching out in terms of the room and the restaurants, I know that Hospitality Improvement District can help with that and has offered to do so. So I think that's what the conservative approach is at this point.
Yeah, it seems to me that all of this is paid for.
Before we had deliberations, I would imagine that we may receive public comment on this. So let me open it to public comment.
I didn't get airfare to come up to the podium. I, just to comment about Karen's previous comments, you know, I didn't realize that the, anyone from the Forest and Beach Commission had their own vocabulary. I never associated triage with the Forest and Beach Commission, but I will now every time I hear the word. You know, the question is twofold. The first question is, should we invite the mayor of Petra? And then the question is, if so, what's the package if we do it? So the last visit was Barney Liola going to, going to Petra in 1971 in his first term as office for the, for those of you who weren't, aren't aware, he had two different times that he was elected to office with a big space in between. And as far as I know, and unless Ashley has something else, there was only one visit from Petra here and that was on the ill-fated weekend in November of 1963 when they landed in Monterey to find out that JFK had been assassinated. And so needless to say, there was a damper on the visit. The visit when Evan Whittlesley and his wife and as Ashley accurately said, went to Spain and to Palma in 1963, they were paid first-class fare for Evan Whittlesley and his wife and he then paid for Debbie's trip, who was 14 years old at the time. And it was a huge thing with Earl Warren and the mayors of San Francisco and Los Angeles because they were really opening the whole tourism to Spain and they took advantage, full advantage of his visit. So from the standpoint of the VIP visits, that would qualify as one and we also have proposed it and I think Jason's prepared to sign letters to some of the VIPs in California. Unfortunately, it's the weekend before the election. So the ability of us to get anyone here at that time who's running for election is probably, is probably minimal. So as far as coming, the committee did recommend that you consider airfare for two people. And the, one of the problems is, and we haven't discussed this before, is getting from Palma to here is not exactly easy because there are not daily flights from Palma. Coming this way, coming west, it's fairly, it's fairly easy, but you have to fly from Palma to Dusseldorf, get Air Berlin to San Francisco. Going back, it takes two days. So when we looked at the best, I must thank the Guinness Travel because they spent a lot of time trying to figure out what the best fare was and this is the time of the season where fares are low, or lower, I should say. They, they would have to spend probably a week here. So you're offering accommodations and I had talked to Carrie about it of whether we could get comped rooms and so forth, but we didn't know that it might be a week. And meals and amenities, I don't know what amenities mean. You might want to be more specific if you put that in. Is that a car and driver or is it a package of gum or something, you know, there?
Muttmas.
Because this is going to be, Barney's going to translate this into Spanish as well when it goes back. So I would, I would urge you to drop the accommodations, amenities and meals and just do the airfare and make it really simple for you on the other end. I don't think as the only sister city in Carmel, and this is me speaking now, that you could be faulted for only, for having spent only, you know, five or $6,000 in the course of, from 1963 to present. I don't think that's what is being talked about. So I would urge you to think about that. And then I noticed in the staff report that it says that the committee will solicit the meals and all the amenities. This is a city-to-city. I would say really we should look to the staff to take care of this and not load us with more than we've already got, which is over the top. So if there are any questions other than what I've just said, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Sue. Let me conclude public comment and then if the council has any questions. Bobby.
Counsel?
Nope.
Is I'm done? Counsel, mayor, staff. Well, I currently sit on the board for the Hospitality Improvement District and I would be happy to take this question to them and see if they want to help chip in or do something to get the job done to get them a flight over here. I have a feeling the hotels and the restaurants are not going to be a problem at all. I just, Carrie probably agree with me, the hotels are really good about doing that sort of stuff. But I'll definitely take it to the Hospitality Improvement District and see if they'll be willing to chip in something for that. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Bobby, for that offer. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back and it'd be really nice to not overcomplicate this. This is not a, not a huge decision, but we do have two points of view. And I, I think that the reason that it's crafted as is was, you know, in, more in line with Carrie's point of view of, you know, just being concerned about, you know, this taxpayer dollars and when I walk around town, talk with folks, you know, the fact that we have a sister city is not frankly known by probably too many people. And so it becomes sort of a question, you know, some cities have a much more robust sister city relationship. Monterey does, for example. Carmel has not. And I think that, you know, that at least weighs on my, my thinking and, but I'm perfectly happy to sign whatever letter the council wants, so.
Well, I'll tell you how I feel about it and I think the history is interesting, but it's been at least 40 years since we've been in touch with one another and so I'm.
Oh, that's not, we've been in letter contact.
Yeah. Let me amend what I just said. Forty years since we've been there, they've been here. I think the economy is tightening and we're going to have some cuts in the budget next year. And so I find it difficult to be spending several thousand dollars or more buying plane tickets for long-lost cousins we haven't seen in 40 years. At the same time, we are putting cuts in various parts of the budget and so I'm in favor of the letter the way it's written.
Can we entertain the offer of the HID, possible offer of the HID? I mean, that's another way to look at this is that when the letter, when I saw the letter, and again, I didn't intend to complicate anything, I didn't know that the committee had recommended it to be a different way than the letter was written. I had no idea. All I just thought was if I was receiving this invitation, and I happen to know because it is in the staff report, that everything is donated. So the gesture of the city is to invite them to something that we're not putting up anything for. I don't think we have to put anything up for, but I think if we really want them to come, I mean, then you have to actually make it possible for them to come. So if it's, if it's, if it's something that we can do with no cost to the city, then maybe folks like Ken and Carrie, who are very fiscally conservative tonight, would be in favor. But I don't, again, I don't want to overcomplicate. I didn't know if this was a slam dunk or something silly or it seemed to me like it was not, not really a heartfelt invitation at the way it's written. So if there's, if there's anything we can do to delay it, to see if we can do it cost-free, maybe that would be a possible avenue.
Let me just clarify, the HID funds are supposed to be used for the purposes of marketing the city. And I don't know if this is, really would be part of that definition. So marketing and PR of the city. And so in order to enhance overnight stays. So I don't know how comfortable I would be on the HID with that in mind. I'm not on the board, but that's the true essence of what the HID is, is public relations and marketing.
I mean, this is, at best, this would be a human interest story. I'm sure Mary Schleih would type it up so that you could relax on that point. But no, I just, I don't, we don't have any way of knowing if that's, you're right.
Go ahead, Steve. So being in the travel business since I was 16, I think if you're going to invite somebody to a party, I think you should pick up the tab. I mean, I'm sorry, it's a, I think Sue does have a point. Since 1963, it's $5,000. We have a very large budget. We move money around constantly and I'm sure we waste a heck of a lot more money than $5,000. The person, the mayor, might not, not you, the mayor of Palma might not want even accept it, but I think it's a courtesy to say, look, we're willing to give you, whether it be first class, coach. There's many airlines you can get on besides Air Berlin to get, to get over here. You know, I just think we should pick up X amount of dollars and if, if other people want to chip in, they chip into a higher airfare, but, or you can continue this to next month and to see if the HID or if anybody else wants to chip into the airfare, but I'd be embarrassed sending a letter saying, here's an invite, but hey, pay your own way over here. Why send the invite? You know, it's our sister city. It only happens once every hundred years. I'm not going to be around the next time. None of us will be around the next time. Common courtesy, because I'm, if they're watching this, eventually maybe they watch this, it's kind of embarrassing. Sorry, that's just my thoughts. I think you just kept a limit and then let the HID see if they're willing to do other things, but I mean, could be just Friday, Saturday and Sunday for three days. Pick up the tab, not the tab, but pick up the benefits from the HID and let the mayor go around San Francisco and other areas of the, of the area.
Can you use your influence in the travel industry to get a ticket?
I don't know. I mean, Bobby has a lot more influence with certain airlines and things like that, but we can always reach out to United and all the other airlines that fly here into Monterey and see if they're willing to, you know, we buy a coach ticket, maybe they'll give us a free upgrade to a business class or first class. But that's a.
So this is intentionally a little bit of a punt here, but we could add in some language like if you would need assistance with your travel, we would be more than happy to work with you and please contact me or have your staff contact our staff. Something like that, which sort of leaves it open and intentionally a little bit loose. I'd like to find a place where we get this letter off. And, you know, I think that the chances are the mayor won't be able to come because, you know, if I received a letter, you know, although I would love to go, you know, just scheduling it is tough. So, you know, I don't want to belabor a point that may not be actually relevant. Would the council agree with some sort of finessed language like that? Want to make a motion?
So I guess the motion would be to invite the mayor of Petra through this letter with language that implies that we will be taking care of them while they're here and assisting them with their travel arrangements. And in, no, that's not it? Oh, sorry.
Well, that's not what I.
Oh, I thought that's what you said. If you need a travel assistance, call us. Is that, you, you go ahead and I don't want to take it words out of your mouth.
Okay.
Why don't you make the motion?
Okay. I'd move that we authorize me to send a letter to the mayor of Petra inviting the mayor to come. Similar letter to what we have in the packet, but with some added language that would say that should, should you need assistance with travel, please contact me or have your staff contact our staff.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay. Move to item eight.
Can I ask one?
I'm sorry, 13.
There's one other open discussion there about sending letters to other officials. I think Sue pointed out that they were, it's the Tuesday, the weekend before the election, but I think we want to invite everybody and if they don't come.
Yeah, so we looked into it. I don't need council authorization to send emails or letters or such, so that is all ready to go and I think that they're probably in my box, ready for my signature and I'll sign them tomorrow. So item 13 is authorize issuance of requests for proposals for facilitated evaluation service. And maybe I'll provide a brief summary on this, just, so Victoria brought an idea to the council, I think it was last month, that as we've seen other cities, often use a facilitated evaluation. This council in recent years has had performance evaluations a couple of times a year of the two positions to my right and to my left. But we have not employed a outside, you know, professional to help us with that. Victoria suggested that we consider that and brought forward the name of a firm and an individual that's in the packet here. At agenda review, rather than, you know, picking that just because, you know, we presumably, or there may be others, the feeling was that it would be better to go out and solicit a couple of proposals, I think it's three, three proposals, and that then that would come back to the council. The added benefit of that is that it probably would come back to the next council and what's important is that the next council has buy-in and if they, you know, choose to go in a different direction, that's fine or if they, but I think it's important for the next council to make that choice because they're the ones who will be working with the person in the firm. So that was the thinking behind why we have it on the agenda the way it is. And Victoria, I don't know if you, well, you pulled that.
Ken, you can go first.
Oh, go ahead. I'll follow up.
I was just going to recommend, you know, I had, the person who sent me a draft proposal, I don't think I even solicited it, but it was just, they're kind of standing by, ready to throw in these proposals. Since that happened, I think somebody reached out to Mike Calhoun. I found that out today in my email. So I think there's probably three or four firms that already know that worth considering this and are ready to send in proposals. One thing I've learned from talking with folks about this process is that apparently there are sort of two models for getting this done. One is that the city manager, and this is what we did not do, the city manager, maybe when he's on-boarded, says, you know, I, you know, this is something I want to bring with me when I'm hired. I want to bring a team with me to, to sort of institute this evaluation. What we're doing is, you know, was my suggestion, is a council action and then a staff, some staff research and then back to the council. Generally speaking, the, apparently the dominant model is when it's a council-initiated and concluded action. and concluded action, then there's a council ad hoc that helps with that process. So, it would be in step two, where it says, "Research facilitated management service firms," and we would just say, you know, it says, "Direct staff to," I, I would recommend that we amend that to say, "Direct staff," and, you know, "Ad hoc," and Carrie volunteered, bless her heart, to, I mean, it's not like we want the work either, but we certainly don't want it to be all on staff.
Well, we don't want it to be a staff burden at this time.
Yeah. So, so that was something that I was going to amend to the recommendation in my motion.
Okay. Let me open it for public comment. Sing one, we will receive public comment. Welcome, Dave.
Thanks. Hi, I'm, I'm Dave Mosley. I spent the last ten years of my career creating performance evaluations and measuring employees in their, in those evaluations. What I learned is that performance evaluations are important, but they're only useful if there are performance objectives that are defined and measurable upfront. Since we have a new council, a new city administrator, having an outside service with council, to work with council and with Chip in the development of those objectives, and also perform the first appraisal, sounds like a good idea to me, at least for the first year. I've been through the packet, and I looked at the municipal resource group's system there for appraisal, and it's a, it, it looks like everything I've used in the past. Looks like a, a good thing to me. I think it's a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Sing one?
I'll be very brief. Jason and the council and staff, I think this would have been a very beneficial thing to happen. When I was on the city council, I think we would have benefited incredibly by having a, an evaluator help us. And I think it's going to improve your communication with both the city administrator and the city attorney. That's something, you know, that you've been asked to do, to improve better communication with staff, so I think it's an excellent idea. I hope you move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else? I'll sing none, I will close public comment. And Chip, you had...
Just, just briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Councilman Beach brought this to my attention when we were still in negotiations. This is something that I, that I think would be very healthy on my part. If you'll recall, part of my, part of my desire and my contract is that we do sit down within a very short window, I think it's ninety days, signing my contract, and set mutually agreed to goals and objectives, not just for me, but those are, those are for the organization that I'm managing. So, this is something that I, that I, I'm, I'm embracing. I think this is really, this would be really good for both parties. My one concern is that it not supplant the individual evaluations that we're going to have on an ongoing basis with council, or that it not, you know, unduly weigh the, the evaluations of council themselves. So, and I expressed that when we talked about this, again, during, during our closed session negotiations. But this is something that I, that I do support and embrace, with that one caveat.
Okay, so, Ken, did you have a comment?
I pulled it too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I had some comments. I think one of the concerns that, when I was talking to Victoria, I had about this was, this sample tries to take, I think, a little bit too much control of the process. And I think that made me uncomfortable, and I think when I talked to Chip about it, it made him a little uncomfortable. And so, I think one of the reasons to get three recommendations is to, to play that issue out. You don't want to abdicate all of that to a facilitator. With that reservation, though, I think in the nine years I've been involved in this process, it has been inconsistent. And I think by using an outside facilitator, I think we can make the reviews more meaningful. And so, I think that's a great objective. And so, I think we ought to do this. We ought to look at the competitors, make sure we're not giving up too much of that control in that process. And so, I'm strongly in favor of this.
So, Victoria, your suggestion is to add to the, well, ultimately, the motion, that staff and an ad hoc committee would review the proposals?
That's right. Just to be assistant, an assistant and do the legwork, and frankly, again, I mean, apparently, it's sort of coming in anyway, with the transom, so I don't think it's a ton of work for staff, I just wouldn't want them to feel unduly hit by this, just on Chip's entry into, into the fray. So, I guess the, the only revision I would make is direct staff and an ad hoc committee of two, and Carrie volunteered, and I certainly think I owe it to volunteer, since I suggested it, but it could be any two people, I guess.
So, I, I have to say, I'm a little skeptical that involving the council is actually going to reduce staff time, but...
Well, I think we could...
There may be other reasons to do that.
Yeah. Well, we, you know, my goal is not to burden the staff at this point in time, and I, my objective is to not add things to their load. So, Victoria and I, or the ad hoc committee, would go about asking for proposals, kind of weeding through them, and then bring those, what we feel are recommendations would be, back to the council. Now, the reason it would be nice to have one person that's going to continue with the council, and one that's not, is then another, that person could present the proposals to the new council. So, that, that, the staff would be involved, of course, in doing, you know, creating the staff report.
Well, I helped write this staff report.
Oh, you did?
So, I disagree with you on one issue there. I don't want the recommendation of an ad hoc committee. I want a recommendation of an ad hoc committee plus a city administrator.
That's kind of what I meant. I don't know if Carrie meant to exclude.
I don't want just, I don't want us driving the bus. I think we should not be picking a...
Well, we would involve Chip.
We should not be picking someone who does not have the full support of the city administrator.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's two plus one. I mean, it's...
So, it's two plus one in my mind?
Which equals three. Right.
That's fine. We'd want, of course, we want Chip, we would want his guidance and stuff like this.
I agree with you, Ken.
My recommendation is that you add, under number three, the bullet point, a recommendation from an ad hoc, ad hoc committee of the city council, and the city administrator for consideration, so just maybe...
Okay. Okay. Victoria suggested this. Do you want to make that motion?
Sure, yeah. I would recommend that we accept...
You could probably just say, "So moved."
So moved, too.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know what I just moved, sorry.
What, what Chip just added.
Oh.
What Chip just added, the one sentence.
Okay, so...
And the ad hoc committee.
But what I'm confused about then, sorry, I didn't mean to, I think that was, I just got caught off guard there. Does that mean that the first two things, the ad hoc committee, wouldn't help with the research? I just, it's already half-done, that's all I'm, so is it, I was going to insert the language at "direct staff" and "the ad hoc committee," not just confine it to the end? Because I don't even, I mean, I think that would be for the whole three, you could make the recommendation, Chip. I don't even think, it's more just being involved in the process, so that it is a fully council-oriented process. So, I would, the way, the motion I intended to make was direct staff and an ad hoc committee of two, to, and then the following, adopt the rest of, adopt the rest of the staff report. That was my intended motion.
I'll, I'll second the substitute motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Okay, congratulations. We've made it through the consent agenda. Now, I apologize, Ariana. How flexible are you on time? I know that there are several veterans who are here for the final item. I didn't realize any of this was going to go to where we are. Would you mind if we invite them to come forward first? Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
Can we take a two-minute recess?
And, and yeah, why don't we take a five-minute break? We'll, we'll, we'll get started at seven o'clock, and we'll take up the memorial arch first thing. Thank you.
I know, that's, I'm looking at, it's a short consent agenda, too. I think I need to use my seat.
They'll be in that office that I used to sit in. That's where we have to sit.
I thought we'd be down by seven.
Are you guys going to still do the setting up for this?
I thought we were done by seven o'clock, but I think it's seven.
Okay, great. That's the PowerPoint thing, we just click through the slides, right? And that's presenter view?
Yeah, I'll bring it up for you.
All right, great, cool. I think we are.
Yeah.
It's nice to talk to you, the articles on the home of the month.
Yeah, yeah, it's funny.
Yeah.
It tastes ugly just to me.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I've already, I've already, I've had a meeting, and I just talked to him, and I, today earlier, I've got to get a meeting, and I can't, I can't, I can't check it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we have to, we have to, we have to...
What have you done?
What have you done?
Exactly. Either do that, or...
It's funny that this, because I'm, because I'm, because that's the, I think I've reached my, I think I blew, I think that's where our, there's nothing that's...
There's just a lot of...
Especially in, in city, like, it's, it's, every department, it's way of translation.
It's a, 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 it's Take care of this.
Yeah.
Who you to go?
Hey, remember when KGF, they still do it, when they did that comment? Remember how they used to do that? I don't know if they still do that. People can play.
No, you can't do that.
Could they do that?
It's not proper. It is not, they can do it, they can do it. That's the way it has to be.
Well, Chip, right, thank you. Mike.
You have to think it's happening. I happen to see it's working. It's starting.
Yeah.
Because they are.
We've got one.
Okay, well, we don't have to.
We're waiting on R T.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, we're, we're gonna get started as soon as we have a couple documents. Bear with us, please.
I apologize, we had it all set up, but apparently technology, yep. Had to work in my. It's an adventure.
No, no, what?
They're like nice modern chairs.
Exactly. I don't. No, I got the, I got the all clear. She's got it. Man. Have you had to have?
No, I got it.
Does your PD trick him?
Yeah.
So, Massachusetts primary.
What are people thinking? What are people thinking? How?
Kasich. Kasich.
Yeah.
They're smarter than that.
Oh, you're right about that.
Okay, are we, are we ready, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we, we will reconvene and, uh, take up, uh, the item, um. Sorry, I.
Seventeen.
Uh, item seventeen, we're going out of order to accommodate, uh, members of the public. Uh, which is consideration of a proposal for the replacement of World War One Memorial Bell on Ocean Avenue median at the intersection of Ocean Avenue and San Carlos. And I'll turn it to Mark for a staff report. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll keep this brief to not steal the thunder of the American Post. Um, so the American Legion Post five twelve is proposing to donate a new bell in order to replace the existing bell located on the World War One Memorial Arch. The World War One Memorial Arch was designed by Charles Sumner Green, one of the founders of the Arts and Crafts Movement. And it was constructed in nineteen twenty-two. The original design included a bell on the design, however, um, when the memorial was constructed, no bell was hung from the arch. And, um, it stood empty until nineteen sixty-six, when a bell was donated by Sir Harry Downey, one of the restorers of the Carmel Mission. And it was installed at that time. And it's believed that that bell, which is the current bell today, was constructed in sixteen sixty-two. And I'll let Ian Martin speak to that. Um, so the bell is proposed to be installed in October two thousand sixteen as part of the city's one hundredth birthday. And there would be an inscription on the bell, and that's included in the staff report for the council's review. Um, and the American Legion has indicated that one of the primary reasons for this project is there is concern over the existing bell because of its age, um, it may have some value, and there's concern over its safety and protection. And that's one of the reasons they would like to do this. Another is they would like to see, um, the original intended design, um, bell be installed on the memorial. So the Historic Resources Board reviewed this proposal in January. They reviewed it to determine if it was consistent with the secretary's standards. And they also reviewed it to make recommendations to the city council. And the H R B did support the project. However, they directed the applicant to, um, revise the design to better match the original Charles Sumner Green design, so the applicant is working on that. The H R B indicated that they were comfortable with this project, um, going before the council first, prior to having to go back to the H R B to review that revised design. So, um, it will go to the H R B again. And they also amended, recommended that the existing bell, um, be removed as soon as possible for its protection. And that it be stored and displayed on city property at a location such as the children's library or somewhere else. Um, so staff is, um, making two recommendations, and one is to accept the concept of replacing the bell, and, um, and if the council does that, the applicant can go forward and have a new bell made. And the council would accept this as a gift at a future meeting. However, as noted in the staff report, as an alternative, the council could also deny this request, in which case the applicant would not proceed. And the second request of staff is for the council to provide direction on the, um, current bell, which is there right now. It has gotten some press lately and some notoriety, so, um, staff is just seeking guidance in terms of whether the bell should remain or be removed and possibly placed another location on city property. And that concludes my staff report. Are there any questions of staff?
Thank you very much, Mark. Any questions?
Mark, one comment, I think you made was, the design of the proposed new bell is subject to H R B.
It is, yes.
H R B approval, and I don't see that in the actual recommendation, so we just to assume that's what's gonna happen. We moved the staff recommendation.
Um, so it would go to H R B before the applicant donates it. But basically, from this point forward, um, we would work with the H R B to review that revised design. Technically, the H R B would not be approving the project, they would just be reviewing it and determining whether it's consistent with the secretary's standards for the rehabilitation of historic properties.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, if there aren't any other questions for Mark, uh, thank you very much, Mark. I will open it for public comment, and thank you very much, Paul, for, uh, being here and for this, uh, very generous offer, and, uh, uh, if, uh, if you would like a few more than three minutes, please feel free.
Well, our presentation is gonna be, is somewhat lengthy, but we're gonna try and keep it as minimized as possible. Um, did you want me to go ahead and start with the presentation, or is this like a public comment on, on the proposed issue?
You have the microphone, however you wanna use it.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Mayor, council members, distinguished guests and staff. Um, it was brought to our attention at one of our membership meetings, um, about some of the markings on the bell. Lately, our community members have been, uh, ringing bells around town, taking a new interest in the sound. Um, as a result of that, concerned citizens came to us, um, with some new information that we were not aware of. And so, as a result of that education, um, we became concerned. And so, we got pictures of the inscription of the bell. Um, my, uh, I, I have some help tonight with, uh, presenting this, so, uh, Mr. Martin will be helping us in the, in the issuance of the, of the presentation. But as we became concerned, uh, we felt concerned not only for its security, but any potential damage that might happen either to the war memorial if, if the bell got damaged. And then, of course, um, we have a historic problem where parts of the memorial in previous years had been removed, and those parts are no longer available and have, have gone missing. Um, so we're still in search, we haven't given up hope, we still think that there's some viable places that, well, we're gonna be looking at. Um, so that gave us the concern that if the bell is removed, that we wanna make sure that it goes into a secured place so that the public will still be able, and we can kinda keep an eye on it. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Martin to, um, uh, continue on with the presentation. And I'll be back, uh, um, to have more comments later as, uh, my part of the presentation is presented. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome in.
Okay, great. I, did you wanna do public comments first, or how would you like to do that?
Well, w- what I was intending to do was to, uh, receive the staff report and then open it up for, for comment. Uh, so, I, I wasn't differentiating, I did, did say that you could use a bit more time because I, so, um, do, do you have additional comments beyond the comments?
No, I don't, I'm, I'm ready to launch in, so however, however you think is the appropriate procedure is fine by me.
I guess I'll say the same thing I just said, you have the microphone, please use it.
Okay, wonderful, great, alright, cool. Um, let's get all plugged in here. Alright, I've got the, I've got the, the mouse, I'm good, thank you, Richard. Alright, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Chip, welcome to Carmel by the Sea. I'm, I'm very glad you're here and hear fantastic things, and I'm, and I'm very pleased that, uh, that Chief Calhoun is back wearing his, his, uh, his normal hat. And, um, thank you for this opportunity, I'd like to thank the American Legion Post five twelve for this opportunity to discourse on the history of Carmel by the Sea, and I wanna ask you guys, well, no, I'll tell you guys. Argyle Campbell, who was Don Freeman's predecessor many years ago, gave Carmel by the Sea two iconic things. Ordance ninety-six behind you, and also, it's not commonly known, it was his idea to create the Soldier's Memorial, the World War One Memorial on Ocean Avenue. When World War One broke out, Argyle Campbell put his law career on hold, and he joined the army. And then he went, served as a military law instructor at the Presidio, and also up at Santa Clara. And then, when he, and then the, he didn't go to Europe like many other Carmel by the Sea men did, he stayed here, but he can, he did his part. He joined the army, he served. And I believe that that meets the American Legion's post, the American Legion's definition of, of, of a wartime veteran. And he served, he did his part, he came back to Carmel by the Sea, and then he wrote an anonymous letter to the Pine Cone as an ex-service person saying, "We ought to have a memorial for our soldiers who served in Carmel by the Sea, uh, during World War One." And somebody outed him in the Pine Cone many months later. And Argyle Campbell then went on to personally raise money for the war memorial. Host, and he was a dance choreographer, among other things, and he choreographed a vaudeville show. And that vaudeville show happened at Manzanita Hall, which is the American Legion Post five twelve, to raise money for the memorial. So, this is a, so we have two iconic pieces of Carmel by the Sea history we can attribute to Argyle Campbell, Ordinance ninety-six and the war memorial. And now I'm gonna talk about my predecessor, and again, I'm here, but I'm here tonight as a private citizen, not as a planning commissioner. And that's Charles Sumner Green. And, uh, let's see, how, um, Charles Sumner Green, he came here to Carmel by the Sea in nineteen sixteen. He was ready to hang it up as an architect at the time, and he saw Carmel by the Sea as a place to spiritually renew himself and explore himself spiritually, and he became involved in the community and continued his architecture as a way of exploring that spirituality. And one of the projects he took on was, uh, was the war memorial. Um, he's best known probably for the Gamble House in Pasadena. Um, and he moved to this tranquil, beautiful place in nineteen sixteen, this idyllic spot. And then, World War One broke out, and the town responded, and I'm gonna hand it back over to the American Legion.
So my forefathers, after returning from "the war," in quotes, because they thought that that was the end, decided to erect a memorial honoring their fallen comrades, who paid the ultimate sacrifice as a reminder that freedom is not free. Charles Sumner Green's father was also a veteran, he was a veteran of the Civil War. He lived in, here in Carmel, at, during the construction of the war memorial fountain. It was actually created and designed as the war memorial fountain, not arch, fountain. And we're gonna get to that here in a minute. Charles Sumner Green designed, uh, donated his design in service to oversee this construction. My forefathers raised the money of this memorial by holding fundraisers, doing vaudeville acts, holding private, and through private donations. Now, keep in mind, in nineteen twenty-one, five dollars was a lot of money. The project itself was actually estimated to be approximately a thousand dollars. Many donations were five and ten dollars. Even the French consulate made a generous donation to put us over the top. This memorial stands for reminding us of our fallen comrades and the cost of freedom. The veterans of Carmel have been very active in the community and were a part of the founding, founding city in many ways. As he was talking, even Ordinance ninety-six, standing behind you, was created by a veteran and a member of the American Legion. Over the years, other wars came and gone. At different stages, items were added and taken away from the war memorial by adding a plaque. Then the removal of the bowl in nineteen, in the sixties, due, due, due for security purposes by adding the bell at the fiftieth anniversary to the city that has been hung now there for fifty years. We believe that this is a living memorial. With our younger veterans, each new additional war, this memorial continues to have new meaning to the newer veterans. It is our intention to fulfill a long-awaited completion of my forefather's project. To them, it was important that we never forget, the, forget the cost of freedom. Liberty comes at a cost. We wanted to, we want to let freedom ring throughout the land.
Thank you, Paul. And there it is. This is a rendering by Charles Sumner Green that ran in the Carmel Pine Cone on November tenth, nineteen twenty-one. The day before the cornerstone for the monument was laid on Ocean Avenue. And you can, as you can see, there's the bell, and there's Charles Sumner Green's signature. Up at U C Berkeley, their original arch design is there, the original design that Charles Sumner Green created for the memorial, uh, which is a two-scale drawing. It's hard to see in this rendering here, but it spells everything out very clearly, and this is a design he created out of the goodness of his heart, for his passion for the community, he did it for free, and he also provided the construction administration for free. And as you can see, right there, there is the bell that Charles Sumner Green originally intended for the memorial. And here is the, this is the, the corner of the, this is what this says here, and it says, "Memorial Fountain to those who served in the late, in the late war, to be presented to Carmel by the Sea by the Community Club and others. Charles Sumner Green, Architect, Carmel." That's a better rendering right there, you can see very clearly, this is the bell Charles Sumner Green envisioned for the memorial. There's the white stone bowl that Carmel by the Sea Public Works took into custody in the nineteen sixties for fear that it would be stolen. Uh, unfortunately, the city lost track of the bowl, but I have, in, in my research, I actually have a strong feeling that the bowl is at Sunset Center. And in a nook and, in a nook and cranny, and I've been in consultation with the director, Christine, the director of Sunset Center, to try and locate it, but I have, but after asking Bill Askew on a tip from Ashley Wright, um, Bill Askew was the director of Public Works back in the nineteen sixties, he remembers that the bowl is removed. And he vaguely remembers that maybe, this is fifty years ago, somebody from the Carmel Arts Commission wanted the bowl for something, they can't remember what. And so, I went to, again, relying on Ashley Wright, to the Minutes of the Art Commissions, and, uh, and anyway, I've got a good direction on going where, where the bowl may well be, and I'll be, continue to investigate that. Uh, there it is, the next day after. The next day after that rendering ran to the Pine Cone, that is the American Legion right there, laying the cornerstone for the memorial with the assistance of the Monterey Presidio. You want to get to the -- sure. Okay, here is the --
We have a couple items after this.
Okay, okay, you got it. So, you got it. So, anyway, they raised a lot of money for the bowl. They couldn't finish the monument. They could not add the bell, we suspect, because they ran out of money. It was a struggle to raise the last few dollars for the monument. The Pine Cone is saying, "Please, guys, everybody, community, pony up a few more dollars. Don't leave the last stone off. Just finish it." And so, when Charles Sumner Green and his masons, including Brian Mackel Downey's grandfather, completed the monument, that was it. It was good. It was done. So, anyway, we have an opportunity, so basically, the bell that's in there now is cast in 1692, making it 21 years old when Uniper Osara was born. It is not a California Mission Bell. It's way too old for that. We have two newspaper accounts from the 1960s, one from the Pine Cone, one from the Herald. They both agree that the bell's from 1692. It's very ancient. We're concerned, the American Legion's concerned about its safety. As you know, in Dennis the Menace, the Dennis the Menace statue has been stolen, another piece of bronze. The Richard McDonald Sculpture of the Cheetah Bus downtown Carmel by the Sea, that too has been stolen. This bell is venerable, vulnerable, and valuable as per Richard Kreitman. It needs to be secured. Adding new chain, not an option because the wooden cross member that it hangs from was hand carved personally by Charles Sumner Green, making it an historic relic itself. We never want to tempt anybody to saw through that cross member to remove the bell. There's the bell. You can see the bowl and the postcard. And here's, this is the Carmel Arts Commission meeting back in the 1960s, working in concert with the American Legion when they had an idea to hang a bell in the monument for part of the Carmel by the Sea's 50th birthday. And so, they have an, the Arts Commission has an idea, "Let's hang a bell there." The first thing they do, they go to the American Legion. The American Legion says, "Great idea." And in concert, they work together to identify a bell, which is ultimately provided by Harry Downey. So, the bell's old, valuable, irreplaceable. We want to complete the vision for this memorial by adding the bell that Charles Sumner Green always intended for this monument and complete the vision. And I'll take your questions or however else you'd like to do it.
Thank you very much, Ian. Paul, any concluding remarks before we open it to others?
Yes, one last thing, and then we'll let you go here. Should you approve the Centennial Bell, the American Legion Post respectfully requests that your motion include the following. Under the supervision of the American Legion, the city will remove and secure the publicly displayed, the current bell from 1692 as per the Historic Resources Board unanimous recommendation. The American Legion will invite a representative from the Carmel Mission to observe the removal to ensure the bell receives the respect of the Catholic Church bestows on Mission Bells. Two, stewardship of the Centennial Bell will be shared by the American Legion and the community of Carmel in recognition for the gratitude and the longstanding tradition of a joint guardianship and responsibility for the World War I Memorial Arch. I do have a couple of extra copies if you want to pass some of those. World War Memorial Fountain, which can be traced back to October 11, 1921, when the city granted permission for the memorial to be built on Ocean Avenue, and on November 11, 1921, when the American Legion laid the cornerstone. The Centennial Bell will be rung at 11 o'clock on Memorial Day and Veterans Day by the members of the American Legion Post 512 as per tradition and on other public occasions and celebrations as agreed to by the Legion and by the Legion Post and the Carmel community. Other than requisite city staff time, all costs of creating the Centennial Bell and installing it in the World War Memorial Fountain will be paid by the private donations. The Historic Resources Board will issue a final approval of Centennial Bell shop drawings and the bell mounting details before the cast, before the bell is cast and hung. Thank you very much for supporting, giving us an opportunity to share these historical moments with you. We do understand that the Centennial year is full of many historical opportunities. When I was about this, this is a 100-year project. Let's finish it. Let freedom ring. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Ian. I'll open it up to others who may want to comment. Anyone, anyone else seeing none? I will close public comment and bring it back. First of all, any questions from council members?
One question I have about, once the bell is removed, is there any thought to where it's going to be stored or how we're going to keep track of it? Because we seem to be having a problem with keeping track of things.
And that may be a question first for staff. So, Mark, have you consulted with others on that question?
Yep. So, the HRB recommended the children's library, but really, it's up to the council to decide and staff, you know, as to where the most appropriate place would be. But the recommendation is somewhere on city property where it can be displayed for public use, you know, for the public.
When you say children's library, do you mean the local history room?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's refer to it as the local history room. It's a piece of local history and, okay.
Other questions, Carrie?
Okay. So, that means that before we decide on a place, where's it going to be stored if we -- so, I guess --
Well, that's something, I think that'd be something for the Public Services Director to decide. But basically, if the council authorized the staff to remove it, we could do that immediately and store it in a safe place and prepare the display of it.
Other questions?
I just have some comments I want to read.
Okay. I guess I have a question. Thank you, Mark. We may have further questions for you. Question for Don. Have you, if you can read through that, that's the, I take it as the suggested motion. That's what Paul is recommending. The motion would be probably in addition to the staff recommendations. If you could read through that, I'll give you time to read through it.
I heard the presentation, so I'm pretty well familiar with it. But the one question that I would have deals with the shared custody of the bell. Realistically, should be sole custody one way or the other as opposed to shared.
Okay. And, yeah, Paul, why don't you, hearing our city attorney's advice, would you modify your recommendation at all?
Well, I mean, there again, in the inception of this, you know, let's go back to 1921. 1921 was a very different kind of year. It was also a different kind of mindset in the way things were done. This was a suggestion that was made by a member, and everybody jumped on board. It was never, "It's yours, it's mine." It was always in the spirit of cooperation that it was a joint thing. All we're trying to do is maintain what historically and traditionally has been since the inception of the monument, that we are just trying to maintain. That's all we're asking. We're not asking for any additional rights. We're not asking for any additional ownership. What we're asking for is that we still maintain the spirit of cooperation with the community of Carmel by the Sea and the veterans of Carmel as well.
Paul, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Would that same spirit and sense of cooperation be there if this bell was displayed in the local history room?
You mean the 1692 bell?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Sure. I mean, because there again, you know, my forefathers, you know, really have been trying hard. They wanted to make something that was dynamic. I don't want to take away from that dynamic. I think that what we need to do is further enhance it and complete the mission that they started so many years ago.
So, we can put the bell in the local history room. Everybody can see it.
Absolutely, sir.
Your role, American Legion's role is well-known, well-exercised here, and then get a bell that is designed in the style of Charles Sumner Green and put it up.
Yes, sir. And we fully support that because there again, as we started looking at the original diagrams and finding out that there was this thing called the golden ratio that Gerald Sumner Green was using, we did have that discussion with HRB. HRB looked at some of the bells that we were looking at acquiring, and they said, "Well, wait a minute. That one's different." Right. That was only an interpretation. So, what we're going to try and do is we're trying to create the original intended bill rather than something that's pre-manufactured.
Okay.
We're running into a few head bumps on that, but we're in the process of trying to work all those out. And once again, we are in full concurrence that we would present the HRB with the shop drawings before anything would be foundered.
Thank you.
Do we know that we have room in the library?
There's room in the library. It's a bell. There's room in the library.
Actually, Ken, I would like to speak to that as a person who still wears the local history librarian's hat. We are very limited on display space in the actual local history department itself. And I know there's been some talk about storing the bell in the lobby, and I actually stopped doing displays in the lobby of historical materials for a reason, and that's that I wasn't comfortable with those, with historic materials being in that lobby that's not always monitored. I mean, there's not a staff member sitting out there. So, I would like to not commit this to the local, if it wants to, if, as far as display goes, I would say that the library can't commit to a display area. We can promise to store it with the utmost safety in the vault and make sure that, you know, maybe we could organize some sort of rotating display in that room. That can be discussed, but I would ask that that's not decided without my input and especially Janet Bomber's input, who's the library director.
Yeah. So, I don't see it in the proposed, I see your hand in the area, and thank you. I don't see it in the proposed, the staff motion or in Paul's suggested motion.
In the recommended, the recommendation of the HRB, it did stipulate, as Mark was reading it.
So, I'll just speak to that briefly. The library was an HRB recommendation. I think staff still really needs to evaluate it and decide where it should go, where it would be most appropriate. That was a recommendation. I think the primary thing that where staff is seeking from the city council is should the bell be removed immediately because there is some concern about its safety.
I'm just, I'm not, it sounds like there has not been the staff work needed to inform that decision as to where it goes. I think that we have the information we need to act on the recommendation to remove the bell and to work with the American Legion on their incredibly generous offer for constructing a replacement bell. I would encourage the council to limit it to that, and if future action is necessary, we'll deal with that then.
And, Mr. Mayor, we're not stuck on having it on the display. We just want to make sure the public can have access to it. We don't want it buried in a closet where it goes unaccounted for. We don't have to have a formal display. It could be on a bookshelf or whatever, but my, our point is that we want to be able to come in and check on it once in a while and make sure it's still there.
So, so I think that this is fairly straightforward despite how long we've been discussing I think that we can accept staff's recommendations with the addition of Paul's, where we would strike out the line in the second paragraph after 1692 as per the Historic Resources Board unanimous recommendation. Sounds like we're not ready to necessarily do that. That requires additional staff work. And then I would suggest we strike the second to last paragraph. I think it would be entirely reasonable for the city to put in some money into this. Frankly, just thinking back to the Petra discussion, I'd much rather put taxpayer money into this than that any day of the week, and I think that we should be open to that. It's a generous offer that the American Legion is not asking for that at this point, but I don't think we should foreclose that in order to move this along.
Why don't you make a motion?
I'd move, we...
Go ahead. I was just going to make a couple comments.
Go ahead.
From, two things. It's going to be very difficult to get the bell done before May 31st, when you're going to have to ring it again.
No.
No.
You guys have to give me a chance. The only thing that, I appreciate what they have all done in detail, but I really believe that they need to have a historic architect on board when they design this bell. I think it's a key portion. When you do a historic home, you have to have a historic architect look at the design of that bell. Now, they have every great intention, the three of them, to make it as perfect as they can to Mr. Sumner Green, but they don't have the background as Victoria does with the historic portion of the architect historian. Now, if you, does that make sense?
Ian, if you can please, if we have questions, we will ask you to come forward.
So, that would be my only concern. Let's get this bell right. And I know they're going to make every attempt in that, but I believe that there has to be a key component of having that historic architect look at that design to make sure, under the Secretary of Interior standards, that that bell is done correctly based on the original design. And again, I understand the bell company is going to do it as best as they can, but I think you need that little extra step because that's going to be there for a long, long, long time. So, that would be my only concern. I really don't have any other concerns with that. It's just, if you look at that drawing out in the front here that they have put up on the wall, it's a little bit different than that drawing.
That drawing is precise.
And that might be a precise drawing, but until a historic architect looks at it, we hold that value of every other historic home in Carmel under the Secretary of Interior standards. I just want to have it double-checked before you go and put something up in our city. It's just a cross-check.
I have a quick comment. I don't think I've commented. I didn't know if we heard an answer to Carrie's question. How do we know where it is as it's en route to its final location? I think I would, I'm asking myself, is it more safe, given what happened to the white bowl, is it more safe hanging there until we know where it's going? Or is it more safe being taken down not knowing where to store it? So, maybe to alleviate my fear there, we could direct that it go into the custody of the library, for example. And then the library puts it wherever they put things while they're deciding how to display them or where they are. But I just want to have a destination that we all publicly know where it's going to so that en route, it doesn't end up with the white bowl. That's my worry.
Ashley is, I guess, our, Janet's not here, is our library expert. Would that work?
That would work, yes.
Thanks, Ashley.
I'm just concerned about the commitment to display. But I will definitely, it will be under lock and key, and I can keep it very safe and all kinds of paperwork and documentation in the local history department.
That's why we love the library. Thanks, Ashley.
Okay. Any further comments? So, I've taken some notes, including one that, so Don mentioned earlier that the joint custody, and now, it doesn't actually say custody. It says stewardship shall be shared. But is your concern that that's maybe read as custody or?
It could be. That's right. And all I'm saying is, it would be clear just to have one organization, either the American Legion take custody, control of it, or the city do it. That's all.
And if it's a donated piece, it becomes the city's bell.
Correct.
Whether they use it, like they continue to use it on a, twice a year basis, but it's still, it's no different than any other memorial that we just did with 9/11. Somebody brought it forward. They gave us the thing, and it's there.
Our custody, it's our responsibility.
Right.
So, Paul, question for you. Would you be supportive of a revised motion that would strike out the HRB? Because I think we heard that staff need to do some research on that. We would add in that it would require, that immediately it would go into the custody of the library for their safekeeping, you know, on day one, that we would revise the paragraph that starts with stewardship. Stewardship of the Centennial Bell will be maintained by the city in recognition and gratitude it lends longstanding, and the paragraph continues. We would take out the paragraph with respect to the city's not putting in private money to, sorry, public money, and that we would add in that the necessity of having a historic architect. And I think that it would be reasonable for that cost to be borne by the city unless...
Yeah, absolutely.
So, at city cost.
It's just a double check.
So, I know that's a number of modifications that we're suggesting, but would appreciate your reaction.
Well, I know that I'm speaking for my members, but I'd have to, actually, I'd have to actually talk to my members about that. I can tell you that our main concerns are, is that whether the city owns it, whether we own it, and who maintains it. Obviously, you know, as I said earlier this evening... Obviously, you know, as I said earlier this evening, we failed our mission, okay? Here's where we're trying to correct some of that. And the city's failed their mission because look at the repair of the south tier of the War Memorial. So is the city going to be a better overseer, or are we going to be a better overseer? That's up in the question. I don't want to sit here and point fingers. I mean, I think that this has always been done in the spirit of cooperation. I'd like to maintain that spirit of cooperation. Now, if you want, if to make it good with you, I mean, I still have to go out and raise the money. We still have to get private donations. We don't even know if we're going to hit our target, okay? At this point, what this is kind of giving us is a sealed approval to kind of say, well, if we go and raise all this money, we can move this forward. That's kind of what we're trying to, what we're trying to get here.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. And please understand, I'm just, I'm trying to get as close to what you're asking for. While also making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's with.
And I agree. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, and absolutely, you know, this will be a work in progress and continue to be a collaboration. And with that.
Now, also, Mark, was it Mark Seavy?
Just to answer about the historic architect, Kent Seavy has been consulting on this project, and he can do that.
Thank you, Richard.
And we do have time to get the bell made by October 27.
Okay. So if the council would like.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just on that comment, that's what I'm trying to say to you. You have May that they have to ring a bell. If you pull it down before May, they don't have a bell to ring at, at Memorial Day.
We'll make other accommodations.
No, I'm just, I'm just letting you all know what.
I hear your concern.
And I just want to make sure.
What I'm hearing is the American Legion, who I think ultimately we all, you know, obviously respect. And in this case, it's.
No, we understand that there may be a conflict where there be no bell. Thus, basically forcing the issue that we need to encourage having the bell approved so we can get something there. We understand that there's a possibility on Memorial Day, you know, that it's not going to be there. So we'll make, we'll make contentions, we'll make other additions, we'll have, we'll ask other church bells to ring for us. So we're prepared to do that or find an alternative. We understand that that might be the complication because there, again, it's a security issue.
Okay. So if the council would like, I'd be willing to make a motion that we accept the two staff recommendations and add in the additional language that Paul has provided with the following edits. And I'll provide these edits to Ashley. But in the second paragraph, we would strike the language after the date. We would add in a bullet that the Centennial Bell would immediately go into the custody of the library. In the line, a paragraph that starts with stewardship, it would read stewardship of the Centennial Bell will be maintained by the city in cooperation with the American Legion in recognition and gratitude, so on. We would strike the second to last paragraph regarding costs. And we would add in a final paragraph that a historic architect would be engaged at the city's cost.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you, Ian. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity.
And we look forward to working with you, and we look forward to hearing that bell ring in October.
Paul, what's the amount of money you think you need to raise? We think estimated right around about $10,000. We do have one bid that may come in cheaper, but depending on the rendering and the designs, we'll have to see what, we'll have. It's been an adventure trying to buy. We took it to Crylen. To, we looked at one of his bells, they wanted $10,000. When we gave them with our specific drug, they wanted $25,000.
But Paul, I think, I think I have $1,000 left in my campaign account. That'll get you started.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate, because that's what we're going to do, is raise it publicly like my forefathers did.
Paul, I'll match that.
All right. You're part of the way there.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Well, now, Arianna, I very much appreciate your patience and perseverance and welcome. We look forward to your presentation on the Highway 68 Roundabout.
Twenty percent of the way there already.
Is this what has preceded your presentations elsewhere, this kind of discussion?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for having me tonight. I'm Arianna Green with the Transportation Agency from Monterey County, and I'm the Public Outreach Manager for the Holman Highway 68 Roundabout Project. So I have a brief presentation, and then I'll open it up for questions because I'm sure you'll have a few. All right. So this project is to construct a roundabout and replace the existing signalized intersection on Holman Highway at the intersection with the Highway 1 ramps near the 17-mile drive entrance to Pebble Beach, right in the middle of that yellow circle. This is a zoomed in, zoom in of the intersection. And this is what the intersection will look like once the roundabout is constructed. So it'll look very different than it looks now, and it will function a heck of a lot better. The total estimated cost of construction is $8.8 million. And it's funded through a public-private partnership between the city of Monterey, who's the lead agency, Pebble Beach Company, our agency, the Transportation Agency from Monterey County, the Air District, the County of Monterey, and Caltrans. So there are a lot of, there are a lot of project partners in this project. A lot of people have come together to make this happen. So why are we doing this project? I just love this picture because it perfectly illustrates the major reason, which is to relieve the existing congestion problem on Holman Highway. As you can see, there's some major backups that happen during the peak commute hours. And cars actually back up for over a mile, which is really unacceptable, especially considering this is one of the major access points to the peninsula and the major access point to the regional hospital. So this project is going to really, really improve traffic flow and access. And tonight, I brought with me a simulation to show you what traffic flow will look like once the roundabout's constructed. If I can get it to play. Shoot. I think it froze. Oh, no. All right.
Snowfall on the first.
Snowfall on the first day, white-out conditions, the first ever in Monterey County. Sorry, I'm going to do this the old-fashioned.
I've seen the animation, and it's really cool, everybody. Trust me.
We do have it. Okay, here we go.
It always works on the dry run.
I know, right?
Yeah.
Here it goes. Okay, there it is. All right. So this is assuming peak hour congestion levels. And remember that picture, it was stopped, cars were backed up. And with the roundabout, traffic will be pretty much free-flowing. And this is possible with the roundabout because the roundabout is yield-controlled. So instead of making people stop at the red light, they simply yield to vehicles that are already in the roundabout. And if nobody's there, they can just go in any direction they're coming from. The roundabout also reduces the speed of vehicles through the intersection. So instead of cars going through at 40 miles per hour, you have vehicles slowed to 25 miles per hour. And what this does is it provides more of a, more gaps for people to enter into the intersection. So it's a pretty, pretty significant improvement. And we can come back to this later. Okay. So we talked about improving traffic operations. Some of the other reasons we're, we're going with the roundabout is that the roundabout will reduce environmental impacts. So because it's yield-controlled, it's not stopping cars, it reduces idling engines, which contribute to air pollution. And so it's, it's better for the environment. This is one of the reasons the Air District has, is a project partner and has been very supportive of this project from the get-go. Another major environmental benefit of this project is that we are able to save hundreds of trees. The initial proposal was to build a larger signalized intersection, and the roundabout actually requires less roadway widening, so we're able to save trees that way. Roundabouts are also much, much safer than signalized intersections. These are figures from a national study. When compared with signalized or stock-controlled intersections, roundabouts reduce injury collisions by 75%, and they reduce fatal collisions by 90%. So it's very significant safety improvements. Some other major benefits of this project is they'll reduce bypass traffic through the Skyline Forest neighborhood. Because there won't be congestion on Highway 68, people won't need to get around it. And another major benefit, which I mentioned already, is improved access to the peninsula, the community hospital, and other, other neighboring communities. And then an added benefit, the cherry on top of the sundae, is that roundabouts are much more attractive than signals. So this is an opportunity to really provide a beautiful gateway to the peninsula. So construction is expected to start in late April, most likely early May, and will continue through February of 2017. Now, most of the action will be happening off the roadway. But there will, we are anticipating three road closures, short periods of road closures. But the project team has been working very hard to minimize impacts to the community. We've been working with, we've been working around some of the major events. So there won't be any road closures during Car Week. And we're trying to work around some of the smaller events as well. Communications is vital to this project. And we have established a communications team and have been, and an interagency task force made up of representatives from all of the surrounding jurisdictions, emergency responders, schools. We have, it's, I mean, it's like 30 people. It's, it's a lot of stakeholders. And I wanted to stress, because the last time we came to this council, there was a lot of concern about emergency access and access to the hospital. So we have included in the construction specs that there will be access to the hospital throughout construction. And there will be, during road closures, there will be CHP officers stationed at the bottom of the closure to escort people up to the hospital if it's a life or death situation, if it's a true emergency. So.
That's just not an ambulance, that's a car with a passenger in it.
That's a car with a passenger, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. So during construction, we are going to be encouraging people to go with the flow and know your transportation options. We are working, we'll be working with Carmel's staff to organize a community meeting next month where we'll be providing detailed information about the final construction schedule, which we don't have yet, but we will have in a couple of weeks. And we'll have, we'll be giving out detour handouts so people know what the alternative routes are and can ask us questions. So we'll keep your ears peeled for more information about that meeting. We're also, we've also been working with the business community and major employers to encourage their employees to commute by alternate modes of transportation during construction. So we've been encouraging park-and-ride, use of MST, carpooling, van pooling. MST is actually offering a discounted bus pass during construction. We're requesting that they start that, make that pass available in April and, and through February of 2017. It's a $13 monthly pass. Normally, it's $95. So it's a pretty significant discount, and we're hoping a lot of people take advantage of it. And lastly, we're going to be encouraging people to sign up for the TAMS, the Emergency Ride Home Program, which is a program for people who commute by alternative means. And if they have an emergency or need to get home before work ends, then we'll reimburse them for a cab ride or rental car, whichever is cheaper. And lastly, how to stay informed during construction. As I mentioned, communication is going to be a really important, key piece of construction. The, the only sure thing about construction is that the schedule is going to change. And when it hap, when that happens, we want to make sure people get that information in a timely, timely manner. So the best way to stay informed is to sign up for our email notification. And you can go to our website, tamcmonterey.org, and click on the Holman Highway 68 Roundabout link. And there's a sign-up right on the, the project page. What we'll be doing is we'll be sending out weekly updates throughout construction and a weekly look-ahead to let people know when to expect road closures, what to expect traffic-wise, and tips for commuting or getting around by alternate means. So I highly recommend you sign up, you all sign up for the email notification and let others know about it, too. We'll also be posting information to social media, Facebook and Twitter. And we'll also be putting out information to the Waze mobile app, which I'm hoping some of you guys are familiar with. If you're less tech-savvy and don't want to use an app, tune into the local radio, we'll be, and, and local newspapers will be providing information to them. We'll have an online construction camera that is live-streaming, so you can watch the action from the comfort of your home. And we'll also be putting out information to neighborhood and business associations and in their newsletters. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for being, being here at this hour. Any questions?
I have a question. There was, there was talk earlier, you had alternate routes up there. And there was talk earlier with 68 West being closed that that traffic was going to be routed down Ocean Avenue to San Antonio through the Pebble Beach Gate. Is that still true, or is it, the plan's now taking that traffic elsewhere?
There will be, there will be a detour. It's looking like it'll be a nighttime detour, night work. And that we'll have people going down Highway 1 and turning around at Carpenter. Or large vehicles, large trucks will have to go down to Ocean and, and turn around and use that frontage road to get back to Highway 1 North. But we're not, we don't have.
I'm more worried about the traffic that was going to Pacific Grove. Can't go that way, and so it's going to come down into Carmel and come down our streets and through downtown and Pebble Beach Gate?
We don't have a, we won't have a official detour through Pebble Beach. And we not, we won't have an official detour through the Carmel Gate.
Can you tell me how, what the route is going to be, if I want to go, if I'm coming south on Highway 1, and I usually go on 68 to Pacific Grove, how, what the route, suggested route's going to be?
If, we will have a ramp closure. So the ramp, if you're going south and you want to take the ramp to get to Pacific Grove, there will be a period of time where that's closed. And the detour will be through the Munrus Skyline Forest neighborhood.
Are you going to have some of those big electronic Caltrans signs?
Yes. We will have lots of signage.
Before you come up to Pebble Beach Hill, it says if you're going to PG, get off here?
Yes. We will have lots of signage. Yes.
Because I think we've had a lot of homeowners who live on our small streets down here who are very, have expressed a lot of concerns, I think, to all of us about having an endless stream of traffic coming down in front of their house, going through the Pebble Beach Gate.
That is, that is not going to be an official detour route.
Okay. Okay. And the second question I had, had to do with the, the schedule. So this, we're going to have this. This construction is going to take place during peak season, May, June, July, August, September?
We, yes, it will. We, yes, it will, but most of the work will be done off the road and won't require road closures. There, we are anticipating one, two-week period of road closures. Right now, it's looking like it's going to happen in mid-June. So, after school's out, but before the tourist season really picks up. That's the goal. But, again, we don't have, we won't have the final construction schedule from the contract, until the contractor's hired in two weeks.
And you say road closure, I guess, my follow-up question to that is, how long is Highway 68 West going to be closed for?
Two weeks at a time.
Two weeks, and then open for how long?
And then, the next, so after the summer closure, the next closure won't happen until October, November. That's what, according to the construction staging plans that were given to the contractor in the contractor bed. But, again, that could change.
And if it opens and closes, I think the only way is, if people don't use the app, is to have those big electronic Caltrans scoreboard signs there.
Yes. We will definitely have, we will definitely have those.
And if they're referring people to get off at Munrus, that is, as opposed to getting off at Ocean Avenue, that is the concern of many of our constituents.
Maybe to follow up on that, if you missed the Ken Talmadge sign, then do you, then you, maybe you were going to say this, Arianna, then do you turn around at the next, how do you do that?
Yeah, then you would have to turn around at Carpenter and then go back.
So, you'd go take a right on Carpenter and then do that little...
No, no, you would go down Highway 1 South, make a U-turn at Carpenter, and then go back north and take the ramp, and then cross the bridge over Highway 1.
Right, but you don't take a U-turn in the highway. So, you do? Oh, you do?
At the signal.
Good to know. All this time, I could have been U-turning on the highway.
Yeah. If there's no signage prohibiting it, then you can do it.
I didn't say I didn't know either.
That particular signal.
Right.
Interesting.
Right.
Council said I could do it.
Yeah. Counsel does not provide driving advice. Consult your own attorney.
Any more questions?
Other questions for Arianna? I do have one, and this is a question that came to me recently, and I should have mentioned this to our chief when it first came in, but it came in last week, anyway. The Pebble Beach asked, so the buses that normally come through Pebble Beach and then come up into Carmel go through the Pebble Beach Gate and then down, that's the bus route, and then park at the Plaza. What will be the route for those during construction?
That's an excellent question, and I'm afraid I don't have the answer tonight, but I will, I will get back to you.
The heads-up that Pebble Beach was giving is that they think that it likely will be that they go, they enter in Pacific Grove and they go back to Pacific Grove, which, if you don't like the buses, sounds like a great thing. If you do, you know, like the fact that they bring business, that is obviously a concern. So, that's, that's the nature of the question. And I apologize, chief, I didn't give you a heads-up on that question before, but, so, wasn't expecting an answer tonight, but that would be a good thing for both TAMPSY and Carmel to look into.
Definitely. Thank you.
If there aren't other questions, let me open it to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on the Highway 68 Roundabout and Construction?
Hello, Monta, Carmel Timber of Commerce. I've been serving on a committee with Arianna and a number of other people to plan how we get the word out about this, and I was just communicating with her about an April 7th date that we would open to the public and, you know, businesses and residents where Arianna would come back and do her presentation once again, and also, we would have somebody from MST because, so they can explain their offer of the free, or the almost-free bus pass, and people can get a sense of it. So, she's agreed to that date, and I've been working on a, on a place to do it. So, I'll bring it up at our next city council meeting.
Thank you, Monta, for, for working on that committee representing Carmel. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back. This is, again, just to receive the report, but any other questions for Arianna?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. There's a very high level of concern in this community about the impact, both on Highway 1 and in our neighborhoods down near the entrance to Pebble Beach Gate. And I don't know if, for people who don't, I just signed up on your mailing list, so I'll get the emails, but for people who don't, whether we could put a monthly update in the city council package for the next 12 or however many months, so that people who get the package can at least see what's, what the most current information is.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
And so, we have a section of monthly reports, and if we could just get a monthly report, put it in here, I think we're trying to address a very high level of concern.
Great. Well, we have been working with some city staff, police, and Rob Melane as well, and we'll be meeting with them monthly throughout construction, so we can provide those updates through that forum.
Because I was asked the other day, I didn't even know what the dates of construction were. You've mentioned them tonight, but when I was asked last week, I didn't know the dates, so...
Well, we don't have the final dates yet, so...
Well, you said late April to February next year, so I think that'd be a good addition to the monthly package.
Chief Calhoun was just... So, Arianna sends us weekly updates, and we can actually take those updates and put them in the Friday Letter, which we have been including most of those, and so, we'll continue to do that. Commander Tomasi, and like you said, Rob Melane, and Rob Culver's working directly with them. Thank you.
You might want to consider also just putting them on the website every week, because not everybody's getting a Friday News Letter, but they can always go to the website, whether...
Yeah.
Something real easy.
Great.
Okay. Thank you again, Arianna, for your patience, and thank you for working on this over the coming months. Obviously, you're hearing that this community, which will be quite impacted, is concerned, and we're going to be watching this closely, and we appreciate your close collaboration and communication.
Great. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will turn to our final item. Again, thank you for your patience. This is a receipt of presentation of the Monterey County Convention and Visitor Bureau and the Midyear Report.
Rob!
It's me.
Got an education on the Memorial Arch and a number of other things for free.
Well, happily, well, first of all, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members, staff. Congratulations, chief, on your recognition. Happily, almost everything that was discussed tonight has some application when it comes to tourism. From the memorial, there's a great Da Vinci Code story, and they're looking for the, searching through and tracing back. I love that. And certainly, from a tourism standpoint, what's taking place with 68 and the roundabout, we'll be making sure that people are aware of that before they get here, so they're planned for it. We have staff on the committees as well, so it's a great way to step forward. Now, the bad news is I have an enormous amount of information to cover. The good news is that I move very quickly, and the better news, the best news, is that all the news that I have is very, very good news for all of us. So, I will jump right into it. As you know, the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau is all about growing the tourism economy, creating jobs, creating revenue that fuels our economy. The power of tourism is great. The CVB itself is obviously not the only entity that's driving tourism. We are obviously a major player in driving tourism for the entire community and the entire county, but there are a lot of people who contribute to these numbers, but they're great numbers. These numbers are all up from previous years. A $2.5 billion industry for the county, over $200 million industry for Carmel by the Sea, and the rest of the numbers, I think, speak for themselves. TOT is up, and again, that's driven by all of us. And in fact, I say this a lot in presentations I do in the community, the CVB can't do what it does without the collaboration of all of our communities and all the stakeholders who participate in the tourism economy. It's really reliant upon all of us, but it's great and gratifying to see that these numbers are going in the direction that they are. These are the ways, and again, I'm at the risk of telling you things that you already know and not to spend too much time on things that you already know, but these are the various ways that Carmel by the Sea's investment in the CVB's overall program pays off, from advertising and marketing programs that go worldwide, literally, to media relations programs, and a variety of other ways. I'm going to talk a little bit more about those. At the mid-year point, the overall investments from Carmel by the Sea is a little bit over $77,000. The total economic impact generated by the Convention and Visitors Bureau's programs, this is specific to the programs that the CVB does, is a little over $8.9 million, which is a return on investment of 114 to 1.
Can I ask how you get to that number?
Yes, and I thought you might. That number is derived from, and this is just another way to express the same equation that gets to that. So, there are several ways that we drive business directly. There is our group sales program that brings groups in, and that contributes to a degree, but not to a great degree to Carmel by the Sea, you know this. Our visitor center and the business that we send from there, we have over 60% of the people who stop in our visitor center on Alastero in Monterey book an additional room or book the first room, additional room night or additional room nights. And we have an economic impact equation for that. And then, our brand campaign, we study, we do two rounds of research, and you're going to see, everything that we do is research-based, so we don't really wake up in the morning without research. The research we do for our advertising and marketing programs, we go twice a year and we ask, just specific to our messaging, did you see our ad? Did you see a story that we got planted? Did you participate or be engaged through our social media programs? If you did, did that, we measure all sorts of things, did it make us more favorable? Did it make you more likely to come here? And then, did it actually make you come here? If you did, where did you stay? If you stayed, what did you spend? Broken out by hotel, broken out by food and beverage, shops, and so on? All of this information is available in reports on our website. So, the number that you're seeing there is derived from those several equations being added together.
And is that, that's a Carmel by the Sea room night number?
The, that's just, that is a Carmel by the Sea room night number, yes.
And the slide prior, when you said there was 78K invested in, and I don't remember the title of the, you got, total economic impact, that is also a Carmel estimate?
Correct.
Carmel by the Sea, 9 million?
Correct.
Okay.
One number you're missing here, what do the Inns pay you? The city pays you 77,000, what do the Inns pay you?
That's all part of TOT.
The Inns don't pay anything. We collect a dollar per night.
Right.
That the guest pays.
So, and what, how much is that?
On a yearly basis, the TID.
The total TID?
Yeah.
For Carmel by the Sea?
Right.
I may or may not have that. 340?
Yeah.
Well, the city does about $100,000, and then the TID is 100, so...
Yeah, I think it's 114,000 is what the Inns pay.
But I can confirm those numbers for you.
What we're looking for is the total impact. If that TID plus what we're paying you went into another pocket, we wouldn't be spending 77,000, we'd be putting a significantly larger number into a different pocket.
Understood.
So, I think we need to reflect the total revenue that is going to the MCCV B, just not the piece that the city's paying, because the Inns and the guests are paying and...
And in terms of the, so the return on investment, that's an incorrect, misleading calculation.
It's a very misleading calculation.
If the top number is off by a factor of a couple...
Well, I think it's also misleading, because that's the generated, but that's not the, if we're looking at what the city's paying...
Well, Rob's looking at it for what the city invested.
Right.
And what Ken is saying is, tell me what...
The total investment is.
Total investment, the city of Carmel.
Yeah, what the total investment is.
The Inns, what they're paying, you know, the TID.
Yeah, and that, that's absolutely fair point. I mean, when we do these presentations for our jurisdictions, we focus on just specifically what is the city...
But if we were not to invest in the MCCV B, and we took the TID money and what we were paying and put that into a different pot.
Right.
And we spent that money, we would, we wouldn't be spending 77,000, we'd be spending the TID plus the city contribution.
Right.
So, it's important for us to look at the total that we're paying the MCCV B.
Completely understand. You want the marketing ROI on the total spend, all in?
Yeah.
Got it.
In order, but the TID would have to be...
Understood.
Reformulated, yeah.
Yeah, we can, and we can break that out, so we can come with a holistic number, but then show specifically how it's comprised.
So long as we're taking issue with numbers on this slide, if I heard you correctly, just one element of it, of a visitor comes into the visitor center in Monterey and ends up booking a hotel room in Carmel, that counts towards that number.
That would count towards that number, correct.
Now, that doesn't make sense to me that 100% of that gets attributed to total economic impact generated by MCCV B, because I think the question is, were that visitor center not there, what would have happened?
Right.
And I don't think that you can say 0% of those people would have booked, who did book a room and hotel would have, who did book a room in Carmel would not have. That's, it has to be the case that, in fact, the overwhelming majority of them would have booked a hotel somewhere on the peninsula. So, most of that is not actually a really generated by the visitor center. It is a helpful service, that's great, we have a visitor center here and we support it, but that sort of calculation is, I, it seems to inflate the, if I'm correct in my thinking, inflates the economic impact number.
Well, the survey that we do, we are very specific, and we ask directly, as a result of your visit, we ask a number of different questions, we ask where people are from, and what they were looking for, what type of trip they're taking, and so on, but we do ask, as a result of stopping in here at the visitor center, and a lot of the visitor center, and I'm afraid I don't have this broken out exactly, people book directly from the visitor center. So, when they come into the visitor center, we know that they're booking a room in Carmel by the Sea, because they're making the reservation directly there at the visitor center.
I understand that.
Your point still stands, like, if the visitor center wasn't there at all, how many people would have stayed somewhere anyway?
Right.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, I think that bumps up against the, what we can do with the research to determine that, because we're talking about human behavior, of course, and research has its limitations, but I understand the point.
I'm not doubting the value of the visitor center, I'm doubting the value of that slide.
Yeah, understood, and I think there's a couple of things that we'll follow up on that, on this slide. So, we talked about this, same point. Here are some more specific examples of what we do as an organization to create value for Carmel by the Sea. So, we had over $30 million, and this is very targeted media in the first half of the year. This is our team and our PR agency pitching regional, national, and international journalists to come here and to cover our area. Of the $30 million, over $17 million included some aspect of Carmel by the Sea, so there's a great exposure opportunity there. We're only counting the stories when we do this, we note them, we have a database, and we know what jurisdictions were covered, so we can isolate those that are specific to a particular area. This is just an example of one where we brought, we did a media fam this, in November, and you can see from the coverage there, who we brought in, LAX Magazine, Elevation Outdoors, and so on and so forth. Just one of those was worth over $35,000 for us, the LAX Magazine coverage. So, again, it's all quantified very specifically. We use the same methodology that Fortune 100, Fortune 100 companies use to evaluate their media coverage, so that we have a reliable earned media and a consistent earned media number. A little bit on the, more on the marketing activity, these are just the variety of things we do, the, from ad campaigns, a lot of content marketing. We have moved our program from being very traditionally advertising-oriented to be more on content marketing. Content marketing simply is making paid media, that's the stuff you pay for, earned media, that's the stuff you get when a journalist comes, and social media all work more synergistically. So, we're doing things, I would say, very much differently than we were doing things two years ago, and different than how other CVBs do their job, and it's actually paying off. Obviously, we do promotions and contests and a variety of other things. We're active in the international markets, such as China... in the international markets, such as China, Mexico, and Canada, and we're also working opportunistically with the UK and Germany. We're working with the San Jose Airport, they're getting direct flights starting from London in May, Frankfurt in April, end of April. We've got more Air Canada flights from Vancouver and Calgary. San Jose has become the third gateway city from China, and it's just enormous opportunity for us as a destination to really harness that. The visitor guide, we left some out front, I saw a few people took some, which is always gratifying. We print a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of these, we do eight thousand, our hardback, they get used, we get calls from hotels, we supply the hotels and lodging partners with them, and people take them with them, we don't mind that, kind of like it. I talked about China a little bit, so this is really important for us if we're going to play the China game. Everybody wants a piece of the China traveler. When Chinese travelers come here, they stay longer and they spend more, by a factor of two or three times. Average Chinese visitor, depending on the research that you're looking, has six to seven thousand dollars per person per trip, enormous value. Used to be that we would be a stop on a bus ride going from San Francisco to LA, or LA to San Francisco. That's changing, because the Chinese traveler and what they're looking for is changing. They want the quintessential Chi, quintessential California experience. We have that here, and because San Jose has opened up this new avenue for us, the Chinese traveler can get us here, or can get to us more quickly. So, to be better able to service those travelers, we created a China Ready Program and did training. Our first training was last July at Dolores Seventh, we had about sixty members, these are people who run the stores and the restaurants and the hotels coming in, to understand the importance of the Chinese traveler and how to, what they're looking for, cultural differences, how to be better able to service them. On the flip side of that, we're just kicking off a new program called Sustainable Moments, which in part is designed to train Chinese travelers and all travelers how to come here and make the most of their trip, and while they're making most of their trip, understand how we take care of our destination, understand the certain norms and values that we have. We want to make sure that the visitor today, when they leave, leaves our destination in good shape for the next visitor that comes along, and I think this plays very much along the lines of what we hear from residents. We want to make sure that travelers are respecting our environment, and that's what that program Here's just an example of some of the things we're doing in the international market, and a local chef to Carmel by the Sea, we're actually taking Justin to Seattle for a Monterey Moments event that we're doing there in a few weeks. I'm very excited about that, he's a great, great representative of our destination. Just examples, I won't spend too much time on those, we do major fall campaigns, we do major spring campaigns, this is an example of the fall campaign, we taught, we encourage people to autumn up. Again, our tagline is grab life by the moments, and we encourage people to make the most of every moment, because how could you not, here? Just some more of the creative, really focused on social engagement, our philosophy when it comes to driving the numbers from marketing metrics, we're getting a lot more people to our website, but I want the right people, so we rely on research, again, to make sure we're targeting the right people. I'd rather have a hundred people to our website than a thousand people, if the hundred people are the ones who are going to travel here and spend money. An example of a domestic airlines partnership with Alaska Airlines to get more people coming here from LA, which is obviously a great market for us, and Alaska kicked off service, direct service from LA, which replaced the previous airline pulling out of LA, so of course, we got on the promotional bandwagon with them and really pushed that. These are just examples of social programs that we did, one with BuzzFeed, which is a huge social network, thirteen ways to ruin your diet in Monterey, a little bit of an attitude there, but that's what those people who participate in BuzzFeed are looking for. We did a staff fam here in Carmel by the Sea. We spent a lot of time to make sure that our team understands the tourism product on the ground, so we brought our team here and spent twelve hours in Carmel by the Sea, and then we turned that into content and pushed that out to our people that are in our social networks. We have over eighty thousand people on Facebook, we've got over, almost six thousand people on Instagram, so we've got a huge network out there that we put, use as a pipeline to push this type of content through. These are just blog posts from the last quarter, this is just Q2 of our fiscal year, all of these blog posts had some aspect of Carmel by the Sea within them, and blog posts are not exclusive to our team, we encourage others to participate, we get guest bloggers all the time. Cmonterey.com and some other social networks that we're working within, I'm going to talk about our changes to Cmonterey.com in a moment, and a few other things coming up. So, we are representing the entire destination at the Monterey Regional Airport through signage and some other things that we're doing there, we're talking about doing some promotions there in the future to make sure when people get here, they know that we're more than just the area immediately outside of, of the airport. And we do something that I call cross-pollination. If people are coming here for golf, I want them to also participate in our wine country. If people are coming here for Pebble Beach, or people are coming here for Big Sur, I want them to do something in Carmel by the Sea. We're constantly looking for ways to get people to come here for whatever it is, and get them to do three things: stay longer, do more, spend more. So, it's very focused on driving revenue. I talked a little bit about what we're doing with the Carmel, or the San Jose Airport, that's in partnership with Team San Jose, their CBB. Again, opportunistic things that we can do with other partners, including San Francisco. Currently, right now, we have a really cool program with Chuck Fazio, who is the artist in residence for the American Forest, which is one of the largest conservation organizations for American Forest, and he's doing this program called Ninety-Six Hours Over Monterey, and he's going to do an exhibit, which you're all invited to, on Thursday at the Wave Street Studio, and I'll have a little closing note on that. But again, it's a different way to capture the essence of our destination in new and interesting ways. And I mentioned the upcoming Monterey pop-up, where Justin is one of our chefs, and there, that's peer media and social marketing, it's a media dinner, we bring a couple of our chefs and we partner with a restaurant and chef there. We've done these quite successfully, the last one we did in November, Alaska Airlines was part of that, we had over six-hundred thousand impressions in LA, which is the number-two media market in terms of cost. You don't get that kind of coverage unless you spend a lot of money on TV in that market. All right, let's talk a little bit about Cmonterey.com, we've gotten a lot of feedback, we did an independent audit last summer, we brought in a third party to completely audit our website, we want to make our website a lot better. We reached out to the community, we had a number of meetings with stakeholders, we had a very substantive meeting with Carmel HID, in fact, last summer, and the input that we received is reflected in the changes that we're making with the website. This is just glossing over it a little bit, this will launch, actually, at the end of next week. First and foremost, everybody uses their phone now more than they use their tablet or their laptop or any other device. We need to make sure that our website is started with mobile in mind. We didn't, we changed our website three years ago, and it was sort of with mobile in mind. This one is really with mobile in mind, and it's designed accordingly. Very visual, my mandate for our new website was to make it, make an emotional connection, make a visceral connection with the people who are participating or coming to our website, so it's very much image-driven, and it's designed to elicit, you know, an emotional connection right from the get-go. Still has the information, but it's carved up differently. We have a new itinerary builder, this is actually live now, but it will be even better when we launch the new site, it's a company called Utrip. This allows people to come in and actually create and share itineraries. This is for people who are on individual trips, if it's a girls weekend in Carmel by the Sea, and someone lives in Chicago and they start it off, and then she sends it to her friend who lives in Atlanta, and then she sends it to her friend who lives in Fort Lauderdale, and they all plan their trip together, they come here, they make the most of their trip, because there's three things I'd like them to do: stay longer, do more, and spend more. This is a way to help them do that. It also goes back to our research. Our research, I know the top five customer segments for our county, I know that because I use Prism Research, Prism is a division of Nielsen. We use zip code segmentation, we use that on our database, so we would understand the top five personas that are coming here, we're going to integrate that into here, because you'll be able to pick, we're going to put fancy cute names on them, but you're going to be able to pick, put in there, if you're a foodie, or if you're an outdoor adventurer, or whatever, and then we're going to serve up content that's based on what you're looking for, and like Amazon does, people who are interested in this are also interested in that. Stay longer, do more, spend more. You might not notice, but this is a draft page. Our new website is really going to be multiple websites, and again, from good, great comment and feedback that we got from some of our stakeholders, is we want each of our jurisdictions to feel as if it's its own place. Now, we want to connect those dots, that's what people are looking for, but we're giving a home, so it's like multiple websites, all under this one big banner website, there's connectivity between them, but we're giving each its own distinct area. Onto the research a little bit, this is just a snapshot of our visitor profile study, this is really valuable to our stakeholders, because this tells us where people are coming from, how long they're staying, how much they're spending, how long we can potentially get them to stay longer. I know that six-point-three percent of the people who came to Monterey County in the past year came from international markets. I know who's coming from California and outside from California. I know what motivates them and what they're looking for out of their trip. This is information to be shared by all our members, this is available on our website now. If I'm an individual business owner, there's something in this for me, if I'm Pebble Beach Company, there's something in this for me. Just some additional information, and again, the CBB is doing its best, when it's doing for stakeholders the things that they couldn't or wouldn't do on their own, whether it's a budget reason or otherwise, and this, I think, the power of the research that we do in and of itself makes, I think, each of our members a lot more powerful in terms of how they market themselves. And finally, like I said, we're doing Ninety-Six Hours, it's going to be this great photo and video exposition, the guy's a drone pilot, he's capturing things from the air, from the ground, and from underwater at Wave Street Studio, we have a quarterly forum coming up on April twenty-seventh, where we share the same information more broadly. And in a very condensed way, that is my presentation. I did that pretty fast, so I certainly understand if there's questions, I would also understand that there's not a lot of questions considering the hour.
Well, thank, thank you very much, Rob, and we started out with questions already, but additional questions for Rob, and then we'll open it to the public and bring it back and wrap up this meeting. Victoria.
I get the hint. So, first of all, I think the website is so much better than four years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I, I was going to insert my typical annual comment, where is Carmel? But I was playing with the website as you were speaking, and I found Carmel, which is unusual, and good. I also Googled what I would Google if I was traveling here from someplace else, and I, so I put Carmel Travel on one Google page, and then I put Monterey Travel on the other Google page. Monterey Travel, your site comes up number five, I think that's good, it shows up on my, you know, I can see it on the main hit page. If I put Carmel Travel on, I cannot find your website, which means that, for some reason, you know, the keyword stuff, so I just throw that out there, because I'm always, my, my hat is always on of like, you know, again, where's Carmel? So, since you answered my normal question, I was looking for it on another, so I get a hundred hits when I Google on my machine, and I don't think your, your site is among them. So, that means if I'm going to Carmel, then, and I know I'm going to Carmel, and I'm trying to use your wonderful new website, I don't see it, and it makes sense, because it's called Cmonterey.com, so maybe that's part of it, but it, you know, you know how to handle that, I don't, but...
Yeah, it's a search function, and that's going to be addressed in this, this renovation of the website.
Great. My other question was Carmel versus Carmel by the Sea. To me, that's very confusing, if you're not from here. I think even if you buy a house here, you don't know if you're in Carmel by the Sea or not.
Yeah.
I think, I just happen to be in Carmel by the Sea when I moved here.
Did you know you can do a U-turn on the highway?
Luckily...
Being helpful.
Because I'm over the line, I got to be on the council, so, so it really does, it matters to us, obviously.
Certainly.
Carmel, to me, the distinction that's clearer from an exterior standpoint is Carmel by the Sea and Carmel Valley. Carmel, people think Carmel is the city of Carmel, in fact, we call ourselves the city of Carmel, so it's very confusing. So, some places in your website, you have just the two distinctions, I feel like that's clear, Carmel by the Sea and Carmel Valley, but in some places, you have the third one, which is Carmel. I don't even know what that is, I try to explain this to my relatives, they're like, what are you talking about? It's like, it's a county jurisdiction, you know, so, it's not, I don't think it's a tourist-type mentality.
So, your, your, your thought there is that consistently Carmel by the Sea ensure it throughout?
Carmel by the Sea versus Carmel Valley, I think even if that's not technically jurisdictionally correct, because we have other jurisdictions in there, like the county of Monterey, or the, I don't even really know what unincorporated Carmel is, I mean, I think I know what it is, but I bet everyone has a different definition, but I feel like as soon as you get out of Carmel by the Sea and kind of across the highway, you can designate it as Carmel Valley, because that's where we associate, because then you're going inland-ish.
Yeah, that's, that was, that's how we do it, actually.
And it's geographically more clear for people, but you do have a third designation here, Carmel, I'm just alluring you that, and I'm looking at what comes up when you, when you search for Carmel, and it's things, a lot of things that are in the valley, some that are at the mouth of the valley.
Yeah, I think we have both search terms, Carmel and Carmel by the Sea, but, and I think to your point, if our website is accurately and consistently reflecting Carmel by the Sea, it's going to help in search overall, versus being confusing or serving up one or the other.
I think so, so that's...
I disagree with you, I think ninety percent of the people who type in from Fresno, or LA, or Phoenix, or Minneapolis have never heard of Carmel by the Sea, they type in Carmel.
I'm, I'm just saying, make it the same thing, so what they're doing, it's, it does, I don't care what the, how the search term works, I agree with you, Ken, it's just that when you see, I can pull down the menu for Carmel by the Sea, or Carmel, or Carmel Valley, now I'm confused. The search, I agree, it should all go to the same place, Carmel and Carmel by the Sea are the same place, I think in most people's minds.
Yeah.
So, not two separate things. Wait, I thought I was in, am I getting a hotel in Carmel, or am I getting a hotel? I don't think people understand that.
Yeah, and the way, the architecture for the new site, it's going to create Carmel by the Sea, and that will be very clear, and then there will be Carmel Valley, and that will be very clear, there won't be anything in between.
Okay, those are my two comments.
Other questions or comments?
I know that MCCVB is working very hard with the Hospitality Improvement District on this new website. Their visitor center just came and did a familiarization trip to the city of Carmel, so that they get to know the hotels, where they can recommend them. We have a lot of fun working with their staff in terms of inviting them to come to the Twelve Hours in Carmel, and that got some huge social media interaction, and it's something that we can actually point to our guests, too, as far as an experience in Carmel, Twelve Hours in Carmel, so that's been really beneficial.
Thank you.
Their, their, their research has gone leaps and bounds over what it used to be, and Rob's a big part of that, and he, you know, came from a big city of Las Vegas, and he applies those things to the little county of Monterey.
And it, you know, obviously, it's a team effort, we're actually looking for a, a marketing intelligence manager, I want to take our research up another notch, so, yeah, and the research is absolutely imperative for us to be able, for me to be able to stand up here and, and talk about the things we're doing with certainty, is relying very much on that.
Carrie, can I ask you, ask my counterpart, I've heard some innkeepers, and it may be the old website, complaining that if they go to book a hotel room in Carmel, there's a Monterey pop-up that comes up.
That, that was the old website that the, that we talked with Rob about.
Yeah, there were, there were a number of problems, and we had some very candid conversations with a number of folks, and there were some immediately, immediate things that we did to fix those as soon as we heard about them, and then we integrated what we couldn't do immediately into the design aspect for the new site.
And also, if you want to book a room in Carmel, it would come up on a service that would charge you, the innkeeper, ten to fifteen percent commission?
Well...
Booking.com.
Booking.com is an online travel site that the vast majority of the inns in Carmel, it's hard, because every hotel has a different booking engine, so that you can't integrate directly with each one, so MCCVB decided to go with the Booking.com website. I think they're also aware of other ways to do that, and they're going to be looking into maybe doing a different model of that, is that correct, Rob?
Yeah, that's fair, and I don't want to presume to be any public comment after I get done speaking, but if someone were to ask, what are we doing with Booking... But if someone were to ask, "What are we doing with Booking.com?", my answer would be that, first of all, we...
I'm asking on behalf of people who've spoken to me.
Perfect. We went with Booking, before Booking.com, we had a third-party company no one ever heard of, and it was infrequently used. The way that people book travel now, and again, I can tell you this with a certain amount of certainty because this is my life, they go to OTAs, they go to Expedia, or Orbits, or Booking.com, and they look, and then they book direct. Someone who works at Expedia once told me that about 10 or 11% of the people actually who come to their site, and they get huge numbers, actually use their site. If you use their site, there's fees and certain restrictions. Booking.com has those same types of things, less so than others, less commission. They were the least objectionable partner, let me put it that way. They're a great partner. They got a great brand. When people come and see, that, that's part of it. They're still, you know, they feel like they're booking with us, but then it clearly says Booking.com. There's an amount of, there's an amount of credibility that people are more comfortable with. But most people still aren't using Booking.com. They're going, they may look, because what people want, if I'm going somewhere, if you're going somewhere, you're going to look and say, "I want to look at all the hotels that are available and what the rates are." That gives you some sort of a sense of, of those hotels versus going to each of those hotels one at a time. When you find what you're looking for, you narrow it down to three, then you'll go to each of those on there. So it saves people an enormous amount of time. We have to do it that way. Booking.com is a business, and they have to make money. We negotiated a deal that gives us marketing value, enormous value, and they're a global company. They do a lot of business. They're started, and their headquarters is in Amsterdam, I believe. And so they are very valuable to us as a customer. But to mitigate some of the objections that we heard, because some hotels, some inns don't want to do it. I just don't want to do it. I get it. You relate a convincing argument, still don't want to. So what we're doing with the new site, whereas before, if you wanted to book a room and you hit the Booking.com widget, it's called, it would take you to everything available on Booking.com. We're not doing that anymore. What we're doing is, "Do you want to book a room?" And then you get everybody all at once. Some will do Booking.com, some won't. But you'll be taken to a place so that levels the playing field to a degree. Some people still want to do Booking.com. Most of our members do do Booking.com. They want to do Booking.com. We selected Booking.com because of our board. But we're trying to make it a more level playing field for everybody by making some tweaks in terms of the navigation.
Let me open it up to public comment, in part because we may hear, I don't know, but we may hear some of these...
Is this where I sit?
Please.
Close?
Yes. Well, we'll take all public comment, and then we'll probably ask you to come back. Barbara?
Jason, council staff. Well, it's a bit difficult for me to say what I'm going to say, but I'll say it. Are we sure we want to play the China game? I really object to that terminology. I really object to it. You know, our streets, our sidewalks are so congested now and so clogged that why do we want to continue to bring people here when we are already at maximum level? I mean, what is our carrying capacity for all these people? I talked to the high-end retailers, whether they're jewelers or women's ready-to-wear, they're not getting additional business from the China game. They are not. I really, I really, really liked what Ken Talmadge said earlier in the meeting today, when he said that the Food and Wine Institute that was here this last weekend, whatever you call it, is a model for the kind of business we want to attract here, the kind of people we want here to come here. You know, that, that's our model, really. That's what we should be striving for. This is all a very slick presentation, and makes it all sound rather glamorous, maybe in terms of bringing more and more people here, you know, to do more and spend more and stay longer and everything. But let's really think about what it is, who it is we want to bring here to maintain our special character of this beautiful village of Carmel by the Sea. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Bobby?
Hey. Council, mayor, staff. I feel like I'm the last one standing. I've waited a long time for this. So I come to you tonight as really as a resident and as a small business owner. Not to have any association tonight with commissions or associations that I'm a part of. So the numbers that we were talking about earlier is actually, we have $272,000 roughly towards our marketing budget for the city of Carmel. That's what we, or you guys have accepted for next year's budget. $150,924 goes to the CVB. That's what is dedicated to the Convention Visitor Bureau to market our city. Then we have another $121,900 that goes to a secondary marketing department, okay? Now, it's been great, and I'm sorry that Rob has to come through these because his last couple trips to Carmel haven't been very fun. But it's great that he, he has been working with, our CVB has been starting to work with our other marketing program, which is, it's really a step in the right direction. But where for me is at the hotel where the rubber meets the road is this number, and that is, how many visits do these marketing companies bring to my website? That's a very important number for me. All that other stuff, I, they bring in $9 million to us, and all these things, those are kind of arbitrary to me. And the $77,000 that was put up there, that was year-to-date. So it's, it's actually, the number is $150,000 that we give to them. Okay, so if I took the one full year from March 1st, 2015, to March 1st, today, 2016, and I added up all of the views that this, that the CVB has brought me, and I'm going to use four different hotels, right, because those are the ones I have access to, are four different hotels, all very different, very different price points. The CVB has brought me 1,173 views. That's what they brought me out of, for the year, out of these four hotels. Now, our other marketing company that we use, Burkhardt and Door, they've brought me 31,984 views. So you can see where I'm saying, "Hey, CVB, you need to step up your game. You need to bring me some traffic." Because, you know, 1,100 versus 30,000 is just not cutting it. And so we've given them some direction on what we think could help. One of the hotels that I'm talking about is not a member of Booking.com. So therefore, that particular hotel gets absolutely, well, it just gets very little traffic from the Convention Visitor Bureau website. And so I'm hoping that this year, we can really hold their toes to the fire and demand better return. We want to, our current occupancies, I mean, they fluctuate. We have 58% some months, all the way up to 86% some months. And we need to grow that 58%, and that's during the winter months. And that's what I'm hoping the CVB can provide for us. And next year, we should come back, and these numbers should be very different. At least, I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment. And Rob, maybe I'll ask a question that stems off of Barbara's comments, but it, but it's something that if you, the council is often asked, which is, it matters to this community when a visitor comes. Midweek is generally better than weekend. Offseason is almost always better than peak season. In fact, I would go so far as to say, and I'm not, I don't know whether the council would agree with me on this, but there's a, during peak times, in fact, an additional visitor to town degrades the quality of experience for all of us residents and for all of our visitors. Namely, we are in excess of what our community can, can handle. Carrying capacity is a term I've used and Barbara used. So what is being done to target when visitors come so that they come when we actually want them and not when we, we can't handle them?
Well, I mean, again, the short answer is research, and I certainly respect the comments that were made previously. We are, I'm very much interested in making sure we're getting the right customer when we need them, whether they're coming from China or anywhere else. And we're targeting the type of people that we want here, those five segments. Those are our ideals. We get a lot of other, but where we're spending our dollars against are those five segments. And the part of those five segments that tells us, when will they take trips? When are they taking vacations, and when are they doing getaways? What's, you know, seasonality of when they're traveling? Do we have a shot at getting a midweek guest, or do we have a shot at getting somebody in the shoulder seasons? So we're using the research to try to hone in and get the right customers. Even in China, we're using research to understand that traveler better. Because, to be fair, I'm not looking for the bus traffic that's just rolling through. I do think and agree that clogs the streets with the wrong type of customer, and it diminishes the overall experience. I want the person, and they're doing this from China, her booking is FIT, and they want to stay at a, at a higher-end property, and they want the higher-end experience. So that's very, very important to us. And we're using research to get ever more targeted. We, as Carrie pointed out, our research program has gone to, I would say, a revolution in the last 18 months, and it's not done yet. And to a point that Bobby made, because I think it's really good, those numbers do need to come up. A lot of what's fueling, the numbers that he's getting at his business from our website. We're tracking, we're, we're tracking now referrals, onsite referrals. So if someone comes to my front door, and I get 1.6 million people per year coming to cmonterrey.com, not a small number. About 800,000 of those people are going from our front door to a member's listing page. And then that's an opportunity for that person to actually book business. We're going to track that even further. Don't want to get too technical, but we're going to be using tracking pixels. I want to know if that person actually went from my front door to Bobby's listing page, to Bobby's website, and did they book a room? So we can have that type of quantitative ROI analysis. And one of the things that, that bothers me, holding our feet to the fire, definitely. We need to hold our feet to the fire even more so than we have been. We are number five or number six. We ask in our study, "How did you get information, planning information about us?" Cmonterrey.com, as good as it's been, it could be a heck of a lot better and will be, but we were number five or six in terms of sources. That's not good enough. I want to be in the top three. Number one, it's from friends and family, and you would expect that, you know, opinions and social networks and those types of things. So we're really focused on making sure that our website is seen as the most definitive way to get information on Monterey County. And we want them to go to your webpage. We want them to go to Carmel by the Sea. I talk to Jeff on a regular basis. He supplied us a lot of great content of what's going on with your website, which is phenomenal. It itself has been revolutionized, I think. So we're, there's a lot of collaboration taking place, but it's towards a specific effect. And that is, I want to make sure we're getting the right customer. I'm going to amend what I said, said before. Not just anybody coming here, staying longer, spending more, and so on, but the right customer. And we are taking very definitive steps towards doing that. And again, all the research is available on the website. We make everything we do available to everybody else. But that, I think, I guess in my, my last comment on that is, I think we all want the same thing, and we're doing and acting in a much more intelligent way because of the research to get that.
I just want to emphasize that when we talk about the right customer, it's midweek and it's off-season. So I just, I know I said that earlier, but I need to repeat it because it's something that we really do care about, and it really does impact the quality of life here when we get that wrong.
Midweek...
And I would just add to that, it's someone who spends two or three nights here.
Yes.
It's not a day tripper.
No, no, no. Oh, no.
Rob was already saying that. I was just adding to what he said. Now, any more about Bobby's point that, of that pretty marked disparity between our, our website, the Carmel by the Sea website, 30,000 referrals and roughly 1,000...
1,100 to 31.
Yeah, that's...
11 to 31. Those numbers will stick with me for a little while. We can do a lot better. But, I mean, it's not surprising, if people are coming through your website, they're looking at Carmel by the Sea specifically. They're coming to Monterey, they're looking at a bigger picture, and then narrowing it down. So it may always be, the ratio may always be leaning towards the numbers that he's getting through your website versus he's getting through Cmonterrey. But we can do a heck of a lot better.
Just from a dollar point of view, I think if you compare the investment in, the roughly equal investment...
No, they're not. They're way different investment.
How much money does Carmel by the Sea put into our own website versus how much do we put into...
We put 120 into Burkhardt, which 60 goes into paid advertising, and 60 goes into that website. We put in between the TID and the payment, $300,000 into the Convention Visitors Bureau.
$150, he said.
Plus the TID, which is another $150.
So, and I'm going to confirm all of that, all of that...
So there's 300,000 there, and if you take what we put into the website, less the paid advertising, it's about $60,000. So there's a differential. Let's say it's five to one.
So Ken, I'm going to complete my point, which is that in order of magnitude, they're roughly the same. And, you know, Ken, you can do whatever math you want, but it's not that we're putting in a ton more money into the Carmel website. In fact, Ken will argue that we're putting in less. But even if we are putting in the same, then you would expect that the referrals would be the same. You know, return on investment, if that's the best way to, to measure it. And now there's, of course, other ways to measure it, but, you know, we just had a respected member of our community and a, and a businessperson tell us that that's, for him, the most relevant measure. So if they are, you know, roughly the same, you'd expect a similar return on investment. And what I'm hearing is that the return on investment is not in, you know, even if it were equal, it's, it's 30 times better for the Carmel by the Sea website. If Ken's point is valid, and it, it may even be, you know, more than that, 60 or, you know, 150 to one, if you want to use the five to one ratio that you are working towards, Ken.
I appreciate everything you're doing, and I appreciate the fact that there's a sea change. And my only comment would be is the sea change is, is past due. I see all the activity, but we hold people's feet to the fire about the actual deliverables.
Certainly.
And so even though there's a huge amount of activity, I'm really less concerned about the activity than I am about the results that the activity has to produce.
Yeah.
Well, and the results are multi-dimensional. It's not just website visits. So, you know, there's, it's, it's, it's multi-dimensional, and I think, and that's what marketing and PR is all about. It's, it's not just one thing or another. It's the synergistic approach to what you're investing in and the partners that you invest in and with. And so where Jeff Burkhardt, who is, you know, spending a lot of money putting in on the Carmel by the Sea website, is actually fueling them with content and pictures to be more robust. So it's more of a synergy that's going on now than ever has been. And so, and, you know, it's, you don't just, Carmel by the Sea is just not all by itself because a lot of my guests don't just stay in Carmel by the Sea. And so they're going to other venues on the peninsula. But what we're seeing is more overnight visitors, which is what we want. And when they stay in Carmel, they, they don't use their cars running around Carmel. They walk, and they use, they go to our restaurants. Part of the issue of who's buying what is what our boutique retail stores are offering.
Well, let me tell you the other problem I have with these numbers, and then we're, this is a conversation for another day. But if you go to your first slide, I don't know if you can...
I think I can. Not that, not that one.
Not that one, but the next one. You know, if, in visitor spend, if you take our sales tax numbers, you know, the visitor spend here is over 250 million in sales tax, and it's 50 million in, in, in. So we've got, you know, 300 million. If you get, you know, 2% on, 250 million produces 5 million bucks, that's our number in terms of sales tax. 10% on 50 million produces 5 million, that's our TOT number. 250 plus 50 is $300 million, not 219. And so if you're producing...
Well, this, just, I'm sorry to interject, but this is an independent report. We don't, we have nothing to do with it. It's a, it's a report that's generated by a company called Dean Runyon. They do it for every county in the state of California, so that's what it's...
All I'm saying is we're doing our own analysis here and coming up with, with numbers. And, because we have a familiarity with, with the numbers. And, and I just, I guess I'm looking at the magnitude of the effort and the expenditure and the result as a percentage of our total result. And I have a tough time seeing, and I hope we're moving in that direction, but I have a tough time seeing the justification for the spend as a result of the activity level.
Okay, so we, we beat up on Rob. Okay, so we, we beat up on Rob. I think at the end of the day, we, we would all recognize that, that it's moving in a better direction and I think that's in part because of you, you being here, Rob. I appreciate you, you hearing us out. I, I think one of the things that you're hearing is that, you know, we have, you know, we're, we, we burrow into these numbers. You know, we're not going to just take them at face value. That we want to have, you know, we're, we're going to compare, you know, monies going into this and into other marketing efforts, as, as had been noted. And we, you know, we, we want to make sure that these dollars are, are money well-spent. That not every visitor is the same. We, we talked through that. I think that having the right metrics, webpages being one that was identified, and as Carrie noted, that's not the only one, but maybe having, you know, if there can be a reasonably concise list of metrics that can be compared between this marketing effort and other marketing efforts. I am trying to wrap this up so that I can go and generate some sales tax dollars by getting dinner if there's anywhere open at this hour, but Steve...
I just, I just had a question. When you have all these, you're doing all this analysis, maybe next time you come back, you can analyze how much each city is actually getting in a percentage-wise of hotel coming into each of those cities? Because it looks like we're getting, and Bobby's getting very few hits and you're saying that there's so many other hits around. Where are all the, all that, those, those overnight guests staying? You should easily be able to be able to find that. And this, and then the second question is, you're working with San Jose Visitor Center. I would encourage you to do that, same thing with San Diego as well as Phoenix because we have these direct flights that I think we're, we're just, you know, when people want to come here, whether it's the summer or the fall, when it's still hottest can be in Phoenix, they want to get here. And I don't think we're, we're capturing that.
With the Monterey pop-up thing that I was talking about, we're going to be in Phoenix. We've been in LA, we're going to San Diego, we're doing Dallas, we're doing Seattle. We use those to, to harvest those markets.
So on that same thing, are you doing that also with the wine industry? Because they're doing the same similar thing.
Or like this.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I wasn't aware that they were doing that and I know I contacted one of my colleagues on that to have the HIB do that same thing. Because we have the wine, they're all here now. So let's put this thing together to put heads in beds, all, you know, working together.
Yep. Their, their goal is to make sure that Monterey wines are on the menus in LA, the menus in Phoenix, the menus in Dallas. We do some tasting events with them and then we do our thing. And we work very closely together.
Thank you again, Rob, for your patience and being here till this hour.
It's been a learning experience.
With that, we will turn to suggestions for future agenda items. I will note that we already have quite a bit for the, the agenda forecast for April. It would be helpful to not add to that list, but this is on tonight's agenda. If there are any suggestions, let me open it to the public. Any member of the public have any suggestions for future agenda items? Seeing none, I will close public comment and take it to the Council.
I think what we had was the tour of inspection for Forest Theater. We want to make sure. I do appreciate the fact that we're not going to have any extra meetings to put on more staff time and putting into that, so I look forward to the April meeting.
And I would just encourage, I know you had mentioned that you're going to have different workshops with our staff for the fireplaces and things. I think it would be really a wonderful thing to sell the community the night before when we're doing our tour, is to have those fire pits or the, the proposal. Even if they're at the bottom of Ocean Avenue or something where people can all come down, where we can all go and, and, and visit them, four or five or six of them all in a row where somebody doesn't have to walk down the steps to do it, just so we can, everybody will know it'll happen the night before. Because last night, it was, I think, I mean, it was a wonderful presentation, but to have six people in the audience, we're missing something. And it's unfortunate because I think that was a, a wonderful plan that we all got to see last night. I think it was a wonderful presentation, but unfortunately, the general public didn't get to see it. And I, I think if we're going to go to make this pilot program work somehow down the road, I think it'd be just wonderful to lay those all out if, if we can get the fire marshal and, and our staff to see if it's okay to put it at the bottom of Ocean Avenue, have good parking, easy access, you know, 7 o'clock at night, whatever you all decide in your, between you and Ken and, and Dawn and Chip and Ashley. But I think that would be a, a good thing. And then if you bring it the next night, I don't know, that's up to you all. But to get that camaraderie, to get moving forward.
I, I agree. I'd, I'd love to see them out there for a dozen nights in the next month. Obviously, that's not going to happen. I think the more opportunity for the public to interact with them, the more the public will learn, the more we will learn. And ultimately, I don't think any of us know enough today to know what the right answer is. Unless there's anything else, meeting is adjourned.